Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2015-2016 Board of Alderman Budget Deliberations. Today is April 27th, 2015, and today we are here for the departmental presentation portion of the automatic budget process. But before we begin, will everybody please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its every power and every strength, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the role?
Alderman Anderson?
He wants to be excused, he's going to be a little late, Madam Secretary.
Thank you. Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey?
Here.
Alderman Fontana?
Here.
Alderman Gorman?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Alderman Genetazzi has to be excused tonight. I'm just going on memory, but I believe it was tonight. Alderman Golden?
Here.
Alderman Hardeman?
Here.
Alderman Kubek?
Alderman Shaw?
Alderman Smith?
Alderman Stanford?
Here.
Alderman Vecarelli?
Here.
Alderman Vitro?
Here.
Alderman Vitale?
Here.
Eleven per—
There are ten present, we do have a quorum. The first department we were going to hear from this evening for the budget hearing schedule is Department Number 4803, Milford Fine Arts. That's on page eighty-seven.
First, I'd like to thank everyone for their time and audience. I'd like to apologize for missing my appointed time last week and for fitting me in for this evening. I believe you all have our budget, and I just handed out a few items for your review. One is my annual report, one is our yearly brochure with calendar, and the last is an invitation to our fundraiser coming up this weekend for the Kentucky Derby, Run for the Roses. Information on there. First, I'd like to begin with the past year that the Milford Arts Council has seen much growth, change, and behind-the-scenes improvements. I think if you remember, last year, we talked about a lot of the damage that had been done over the years to the building, the train station. With the help of the city and support from Henry Jattick and Milford Transit, we have had the entire building repointed, spray-sealed, and had masonry repaired to the foundation. We have also recently finished a small business replacement package with a complete overhaul and replacement of four HVAC units, four condensers, venting ductwork, water heater, and added dehumidifier to the basement, and all lighting. This was an incentive package through UI and SEG, and Tri-City handled the project. We continue with our air tests to guarantee success of improvements and repairs and safety to our patrons and volunteers, and we have been covering all expenses for testing remediation and abatement for our troubled areas. To add to my report that's not in there, last year, the Arts Council experienced its first case of vandalism, and we have since purchased and installed new surveillance cameras. Our capacity grows by leaps and bounds. We have a high number of rentals, successful Tuesday adult lessons, both in the morning and in the evening. We had a very successful sold-out concert with Grammy Award artist Charles Neville. And we continue to grow our board of directors, and we are looking for additional board members. And our membership has been kind of stagnant. We see an influx of new members, but we are looking for ways to retain our membership year to year. We continue to have a strong partnership with Milford DECD, with Julie Nash, and we've handled many multiple projects, including the train platform photos, we're working on a mural underneath the Trestle Bridge on River Street, and we just opened our marketing strategy for River Street Wednesdays, which are pop-up events and logo developments for a number of other city projects. We are also continuing to develop relationships with investors and donors, and some of them are listed there in the report. Our programming is successful. We are continuing to oversee our program committees and run successful programs as well through the office and through additional partnerships with Pantachino Productions. Community has been a real push since I've entered the Arts Council a couple of years ago. We continue to build partnerships and relationships with our fellow nonprofits, and we have multiple projects with the library, our school system, Walnut Beach area businesses, as well as developed mentorship for local students. We successfully worked with the Jonathan Law Girl Scout, gaining her audience with the Devon Rotary, where she received a $500 scholarship for her project. We work with Milford Education Foundation, we spearheaded their charity event project for fundraiser. We are continuing to work with them to develop family programming. We worked with the city on their 375th anniversary with WPKN hosting benefits for them. We most recently worked with a community group for the Marin Sanchez Memorial Scholarship Fund, where we ran a mural contest. We are working with the library on One City, One Story. We're going to be having a fundraiser for the Milford Animal Control, and we've been working with Milford Trees and Bridges. The trustees of the Milford Arts Council has recently set up a yearly scholarship for $500 through the Milford Chamber. And just to kind of close, we're just working hard to be a partner for community groups and for the success of downtown Milford. So I don't know if you have any questions about the report or the budget.
Alderman Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Paige. What's your total budget, and how much does this Milford grant, how much does that represent?
We have a working budget, the past few years, of about a little under $150,000. So the gift from the city is extremely important for us, to be up and running and doing what we can, and to provide our programs at an affordable rate for our patrons.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, Paige. Good evening, Paige. What is your total fundraising for the year?
Our total fundraising? Various fundraising— Let's see. I'm going to say it's about $20,000.
Anyone else have any questions? Alderman Frank Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paige, the department requested of the city $75,000, got the same $67,500, which is what you had last year. What were some of the expectations of that additional $7,500?
Yeah, I think that we looked for that, knowing that we were most likely going to be given the same gift that we have the past couple of years. We went back to the request of what had been the gift probably about four or five years ago, based upon the projects that we've been working with the city on, just a lot more promotion for the programs that we've been doing and partnering with with other groups. Because a lot of groups that we work with don't have that in their budget.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned in your annual report, Paige, development of a new part-time employee to oversee membership and volunteers. That hasn't begun yet, has it?
No, it hasn't.
Is that something you would hope to do with the $75,000?
Yes, it would be. We realize that membership's been handled by volunteers for years. With the retention issues that I mentioned, it's just become fully realized that a role that's as important in keeping up membership, growing membership, and utilizing the volunteer possibilities, it really needs to be a role with somebody who has an invested impact on the group. And volunteerism is just difficult to kind of keep up with all that information.
I'd like to just cite, Paige, some of the wonderful work you've done for the Fine Arts Council. I mean, just the brochures and so forth. The Fine Arts Council isn't what it was in the beginning. A lot of these programs, a lot of these events you have are starting to become more recognizable in town, more regular types of events that people look forward to. The programming and some of the events that you have at the railroad station, and the outreach you do to the rest of the community, including the library, the schools, and so forth, is an outstanding effort. I really commend you and the staff at the Fine Arts Council for the wonderful job you do. And I personally avail myself of the services, go to some of the shows and things. My wife goes to the oil painting class, which I can't tell you how much she enjoys that. So it's something that we truly value, and I would like to commend you and recognize the fine work you and the Arts Council have do for the city.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, Paige again. All right, so the city's giving you $67,500, and you're raising $20,000, and your budget's $150 roughly. Where's that other sixty-something come from?
It comes from our programs themselves. Most of the programs that we run, run at a profit. So particularly, we have found that classes and the evening BYOB events have been very profitable for us this year.
Just one follow-up. Just for the viewing public, what does it cost to join the—
Right now, it's $25 a year. We have a family membership at 50. I don't believe that the rates for membership have gone up in—certainly not in a couple of years that I've been there, and I don't think that they've gone up in probably as much as a decade.
I assume you're always looking for new members?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Which is why I gave you all membership forms.
Anyone else have any questions for the Fine Arts? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much for your time.
And thank you for the great work you do at the Fine Arts.
Thank you.
The next department in the budget hearing schedule is Department Number 4817, Human Good evening, Lisa.
Good evening, Chairman Vitro. How are you? We ready? Okay, good evening again, Chairman Vitro, members of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Lisa Diamond Graham, and I'm the Executive Director of the Department of Human Services and Youth and Family Services. I'll call it DHS, Department of Human Services, but it does encompass both departments. With me here tonight is Beth Simpson, our secretary and bookkeeper. Beth handed out to you our program operations for both departments. I'm going to start with a prepared statement, and then I'll take some questions. But just as an overview, as you remember, we were created by city ordinance. We do receive the city grant, which is approximately 94 percent of our overall budget, and then we receive two state grants, one from the State Department of Education and one from the Department of Social Services. However, we are grant-funded through the city, but I think we are unique in that we follow all the rules and regulations of the city, we are in the pension system, and we contribute to the fringe benefit account. So I'm just going to begin with the ancient proverb that I'm sure you are all very familiar with, that says, "Give a man a fish, and you feed him for a day; teach a man to—excuse me, teach a man to fish, and you have fed him for a lifetime." This theory is the foundation of our mission at Human and Youth and Family Services. This past fiscal year, our full-time staff of six and part-time therapeutic staff of 12 provided services that impacted 18,787 Milford residents in the form of therapy programs or direct support. This was an increase from the previous year by 5,003 people. We have also written and received more grants in this past year, whose rewards will be going directly to Milford families to assist in subsidizing their daily lives. We combine these monies with outreach and therapeutic services geared towards sustainable changes. We serve as a community portal for donations from our generous Milford residents and groups. For example, we serve as stewards for administering the community programs that distribute food, financial assistance, and gifts at Thanksgiving, the winter holiday adoptive family, and Easter. In addition, we coordinate gift card donations for food and clothing that help fire victims and families with illnesses. We facilitate the Camp Happiness Scholarship Program for children with special needs. We have strong collaborations and partnerships in the city that decrease overlap and maximize resources and funding. We are an informational referral hub and ensure that residents are directed to the appropriate assistance when we cannot provide it. We initiated, in partnership with MIS, a comprehensive web-based social services map that the community can access for locating services. In 2014, our Energy Assistance Program processed 802 applications that provided our Milford residents with $406,290 in direct payments towards their heating costs. Additionally, we then coordinate more funds that provide financial support to prevent utility shut-offs. Much of our work is difficult to individually quantify because so many of our clients access multifaceted services of ours. What is known is that there is clearly an uptick in the number of clients we are seeing, and moreover, we have more first-time clients needing assistance. They are the young families that cannot make ends meet on two paychecks, older adults whose retirement savings is not enough, children and adults needing mental health services and not being able to obtain them. Our department meets these challenges by being able to provide client-focused, wrap-around, in-house services with these cost-saving measures. As the proverb suggests, we weave education and strategies with financial supports. For example, parent trainings, one-on-one household budget assessments, and creative case management. There is no cookie-cutter method to assisting our clients. Just as every client is different, every solution must be different. At our department, we advocate for these Milford families to help navigate their way. We extend their resources and utilize a solution-focused framework. The therapy we provide strengthens the family system so that the parents are better equipped to support their children. The outreach provides the parents with the financial resources they require to further bolster them. Combined, these tools allow the parents to focus on parenting instead of just surviving. We work in daily partnership with the Milford Public Schools to provide seamless services for the children. Basically, we try to emulate the culture that is Milford, a small city with a big heart. So in conclusion, I hope that you are as proud of our department as I am. Finally, on a personal note, this will be my last budget presentation. I will be retiring in the fall. It has been my privilege to work for the city of Milford in this same department for almost 32 years. I am fearful, though, that the sustainability of this department may be at a crossroads. I am asking you to please have the integrity of these invaluable services that are provided to our community remain intact and not be compromised or minimized going forward. Finally, and really most importantly, I would like to publicly take this opportunity to thank the best staff in the world, I believe, for all their amazing talents and efforts. They show up every day, and they give their hearts and their souls to this city, and I am humbled by their commitment and their level of professionalism. And also, thank you to the Board of Aldermen and to the mayor for your support, day in and day out, to not only my department, but as a resident for the city of Milford, too, for all that you have done for me and for my department over all these years. So thank you.
Well, you're certainly welcome from our perspective. Does anyone have any questions for Lisa? Alderman Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Not so much a question, but some observations. I've worked very closely with you, Lisa, on many committees, Milford Prevention Council, Youth Network and everything, and I think that your department was fabulous in what you do and how you do it. In the school system, I also worked with you as principal of Live Oaks School, bringing therapy groups in. So I thank you for all you did for the last 32 years. And the programs hopefully will be sustainable going from here into the future. So again, thank you very much for your services.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Alderman Vitale. Thank you, and I go back to many, many years ago when you were principal of Live Oaks, and we came to you and wanted to run our improvisations group in a very out-of-the-box type of way, and you never refused us in anything we wanted to do for a lot of children. You were always willing to have kids participate and the families participate, and you were very supportive of all our programs and our families, and I thank you, too.
Alderman Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. It'd be sad to see you go. Is there a succession plan? Maybe it's premature, but any succession plan at this point, do you know?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Alderman Gorman. That is why I'm announcing it now for the fall, so that hopefully there will be a succession plan. I have talked to the mayor about it, and we will be hopefully getting together. I have announced it to my board also in the past, in this month's meeting, and we will be meeting with the mayor to try and come up with a solution, so that there will be.
Anyone else have any questions for Human Services? Alderman Kubek?
Hi, Lisa. Just want to thank you for the services that you provide. I, you know, I'm witnessing in some of the meetings, to the conversations, and just really commend your staff and you for all the work that you put in, especially the work that's behind the scenes that nobody really knows about, the extra services you provided in light of the tragedy last year at Jonathan Law. Your department is just amazing, and I'm very impressed by what you've done, and wish you luck. Sorry to see you go.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Alderman Kubek. Thank you very much. We've really appreciated having you be our liaison to our board, and I will just second what you've said about my staff. They are—it is an incredible team, and we could not do the work that we do without the efforts of the team. And the work is very difficult, but incredibly rewarding. And I think for me, this is definitely going to be a bittersweet leaving. I'm ready to move on to another chapter, but I think for me, leaving the team, and as a matter of fact, Sean McCauley said to me today, we were in the middle of dealing with a family that was really struggling, and we were trying—pulling our hair out, trying to come up with some creative ways to get them stabilized. And at one point, Sean just looks over at me, said, "You're really going to miss me, aren't you? And you're going to miss this." And I said, "As sick as this sounds, Sean, yeah, I am going to miss this." But thank you very much for your kind words.
Does anyone else have anything to add or ask Human Services? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for your 32 years of service and all the hard work you've done in the past, you and your staff. Thank you. The next department for our budget hearing schedule is Department Number 4116, Milford Government Access Television, page 16. That was moved from April 22nd to tonight's agenda.
Chairman Vitro, members of the Board of Aldermen, Mr. Mayor, good evening. My name is Albert May, and since January, I've been the chair of the Milford Government Access TV Committee, commonly called MGAT. I'm pleased to be here before you this evening and to review some of our activities during the past year and our proposed budget for the coming fiscal year. As you know, MGAT relies on two sources of revenue to function. One is the $15,000 budget, which we received from the city, which is the focus of our discussion tonight. And the other grant comes to us from Cablevision and is provided to us through the Regional Cable Advisory Council, which represents our city and the cities and towns of Bridgeport, Fairfield, Orange, Stratford, and Woodbridge. That accounts for 65 percent of our budget. For the past couple of years, the Cablevision grant has been $25,000. But there's no guarantee that we will continue to receive that amount, as it is a one-year-only grant, it must be reapplied for each year. You may recall that last year, there was a period during which we were not sure we were going to receive any money at all from the Cable Advisory Group due to the possibility that the council might need the funds to pay for legal costs related to litigation it was involved in with Soundview Community Media. Fortunately, that situation was resolved in the council's favor, but there's no guarantee that that kind of a situation couldn't arise again in the future, or that the representatives of the other towns on the council might change the grant allocation rules, which could result in less funding for Milford. To address that particular circumstance, we're actively working now to recruit a— To address that particular circumstance, we're actively working now to recruit additional personnel to represent Milford on the council. Right now, of the four slots we have on the council, we only have one representative. So, we're trying to get it up to four representatives. On a more positive note, I'm pleased to report that in 2014, we filmed and produced DVDs for a total of eighty meetings and activities, including eighteen meetings of the Board of Aldermen, twenty meetings of the Board of Education, nineteen meetings of planning and zoning, ten meetings of zoning board of appeals, and thirteen productions related to other boards and commissions and special events, such as the annual Spelling Bee and the city's three-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary celebration. We're exploring ways to do more this year, particularly with respect to school-related activities. As you know, the fifteen thousand dollar budget, which the city provides to us, is a little less, is less than the amount provided by neighboring towns to our counterparts. The town of Orange, for example, provides eighty thousand dollars to its cable access potty, while the town of Fairfield provides twenty-five thousand to its committee. In closing, I would like you to consider and respectfully think about the board considering adding two thousand twenty dollars to the budget for the next year. Nine hundred of this dollars, nine hundred dollars of this money would be used to cover the cost of a streaming service, which we started last year and which has proven to be very popular. This is obviously for people that like to look at things on their phones and their tablets. Four hundred dollars would be used to cover the cost of having a recording secretary at our meetings. Right now, the budget we have for that is only a hundred dollars, and my understanding is other boards and commissions have a five hundred dollar allocation for that need. Finally, there is a monthly sixty dollar charge that we paid Optimum to be part of their online service, which we'd like to have that considered in the budget as well. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you this evening, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Mr. May, good evening.
Good evening.
You had indicated the fact the revenue sources, that fifteen thousand plus seven fifty, is from the city, and then sixty-five percent is part of the Cablevision grant. What is your total operating budget?
Total operating budget is forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand dollars.
Twenty-five of it is from the grant.
Okay. How is the programming prorated, if it is? Is every program cost the same, or is it a matter of time? How is it?
The main factor, the difference, is usually the time. If a meeting runs for three or four hours, obviously that costs us more to cover it than if it's a meeting that only lasts an hour or two hours.
And the average?
The average, the average cost of a program is approximately two to three hundred dollars in terms of filming the program itself and then developing, producing the DVDs afterwards.
Okay, thank you. And you're saying that approximately another two thousand would be asked, could be used because of the streaming effects on, for individuals who would like to be served that way?
Nine hundred dollars of what we're asking in addition would be used for the streaming service. That's apart from our filming shows or filming meetings and producing content from those meetings. The streaming service is separate, but it's something that's very popular. Rather, you know, people either like to watch the program live on TV or watch it at any other time it's on the TV, but now more and more, people want to watch these things on their devices, on their phones.
I understand that.
Tablets.
The other thing that I'm confused about, or you said there was a sixty dollar charge from Optimum?
Yes.
Does that entail?
That's basically the charge that they charge us that allows us to put our programming on their system and to be seen by Optimum customers.
So, the fact is that every program you put on is a sixty dollar charge?
No, no, no. It's a monthly charge.
Monthly charge. So, therefore, the money that Optimum is making from their customers, they couldn't provide this gratis for the City of Milford? Have you ever asked?
You'd have to.
It seems like a needle in a haystack, that they're making so much money and they're charging the city six, or you guys?
This is not unusual. I used to live in Hamden and Cablevision, or not Cablevision, Comcast, used to do the same thing for the Cable Advisory Group for New Haven, North Haven, West Haven.
For such a measly amount that they're going to charge you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for your efforts and thank you for the programming opportunity.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. May, you came before us last year, and it was that the cable access grant was in jeopardy, as I recall, and you were talking about curtailing some of the programming. Now, I'm an avid viewer of Milford Government Access, and I haven't noticed any interruption. I mean, I see the zoning board of appeals meetings, I see the parades, which are always very interesting, I see the recreation department. What? Did?
We never did have to curtail.
Never did.
Right, because the situation at that point, basically, there had been a court ruling in favor of the regional council, but the question was, was Soundview going to appeal that ruling? And we didn't. In fact, I think literally on the day my predecessor spoke to you, Soundview decided they would not appeal that ruling, and as a result, we never had to curtail anything.
You mentioned that some of our adjoining towns have a lot more monies allocated for their government access TV. Do they extend greater services in terms of programming comparatively? I mean, do they do the same kind of things, or is it a much greater selection?
I think they do more original programming, and it's putting together their own program, which they broadcast on their systems. I think that may be one of the main differences, plus they also cover more things.
Be like school programs and things like that? I notice some towns have, you know, the high school.
Right, exactly. That's something we would like to do, to cover more school activities, things that are going on in the schools. Obviously, they're very popular with the parents, so.
You know, I'm constantly amazed, because people tell me, they say, "Well, I saw you on MGAT," and I always say to them, "Well, what's wrong with your life that you're watching MGAT? You know, there's other shows on." But it's, I'm impressed with the fact that people in this town do watch this, and they monitor things that go on in city government, at the planning and zoning boards and stuff. So, I understand, and I am constantly impressed with the audience that we do have for MGAT. And I think it's a very important service. When I was on this board back in 1999, we introduced the original resolution for government access TV, and nobody had much expectation that it was going to be a success. I know you don't work off of ratings, but I think it is a very successful thing, and I think it's an invaluable service. It helps the citizenry know what's going on in city government that you don't really, you wouldn't get anywhere else, and I applaud the fine work that MGAT does.
Well, thank you.
Alderman Hardeman.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. May. I want to thank you for the great job you did on the St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Thank you.
You know, I know it was difficult. We were trying to get you up on platforms and everything, and it turned out to be really well. I've watched the parade four or five times already, so. See if I made any mistakes.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Since you're broadcasting to our citizens, this Board of Aldermen has become much more civil to each other. This was, I've been here sixteen years, and it was like the Wild West, and at nine o'clock, the reporters left. It even got uglier. And now, people sit there and watch it on TV, and everybody is just so nice. It's been, it's been, it's been a, it's been a great service to the citizens to be able to watch and truly see how the government operates and to see that the people are representing it properly. So, I like that. But I just have one question for you, and that is, your department requested fifteen seventy, fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is what the mayor recommended and which is what the finance board recommended. But you're asking for a little bit more now. Would have been easier if you had asked, you know, in your budget request. So, is there any reason why it's lower than what you want now?
I think probably it's the change in leadership, I think. I mean, I came in in January, the budget request was put together pretty much by my predecessor. As I learn more about the operations and the needs and things, I mean, this is what I was told by the people on the board and the people I work with, that this, that we could use this money in addition to what we're already, had already asked for. So, I figure I bring it up. I mean, you know, we could put it off for next year, we'll exist with what we have now, but next year, we probably will be asking for it earlier, because I understand your point, and I agree with it. The earlier, the better to bring these things up. Thank you.
Alderman Kubek.
Hi there. I'm just wondering, if you're not a Cablevision customer, can you get access to MGAT through, is it Frontier now? It used to be AT&amp;T, Uverse. Do those customers have access to it?
Yes, they do, though my understanding is some of them don't seem to be able to access it.
Okay.
We've talked to Frontier about this. This actually goes back to when it was AT&amp;T.
Right.
Same problem. And they say, you know, if any, you hear from any of our subscribers that they're having troubles, let us know about it. So, so we were thinking of putting something in the newspaper, in the Milford Mirror, basically saying, "If you're a Frontier customer and having problems accessing the educational channel or the government channel, whatever, let us know, and we'll contact Frontier and see if they can work it out."
So, that citizen should contact you?
Well, they can contact me, and I can tell them who to contact at Frontier, because, I mean, I had to go through like twelve different people to find the right person to speak to.
Right.
So, I'm willing to service the contact and then refer them to the right person at Frontier.
And is there a monthly charge from Frontier? Like, you get for the cable?
No, not that I'm aware of. Yeah, which kind of gets back to your point.
Right.
Why is, why do we get charged by Cablevision, but we do? So.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, at the bottom of everybody's cable bill or Frontier bill, there is a charge for peg programming, public educational and government access television. That money then goes to, well, Soundview, who's the middleman, and then a hundred thousand dollars is carved off for Cablevision customers, which service the majority of homes in, at least in Milford, and that goes to the Area Two Cable Advisory Council. And then the various towns split up that hundred thousand dollars. Milford has been receiving about twenty-five thousand dollars. Back, I think, five or six years ago, Cablevision, in addition to giving us the twenty-five thousand dollar a year grant for Milford, or a hundred thousand dollar grant to CAC, did install a line which allows us individual programming for Milford onto Channel seventy-nine, educational Channel seventy-eight. So, they did install all the equipment. The cable bill that we have, in order to make it work, we do have the normal cable box in the control room, but the equipment was actually installed by Cablevision for the materials that we need in order to get individual, town-specific programming for Milford. Again, this was seven years ago. AT&amp;T, prior to Frontier, also installed some additional equipment a couple of years ago, also allowing town-specific programming. If you go to Frontier, I believe it's Channel ninety-nine, I had it up until recently, there is live streaming available, as well as a couple of different additional peg programmings on Channel seventy-nine. It's a little bit more difficult to access than the Cablevision, but that's a little bit additional history above and beyond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that clarification. Does anyone else have any? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Mr. May, as Alderman Kubek had indicated, she might have had some constituents not getting the cable government access channel. And so, if you know that contact, could you announce it now so that those people who are visiting, their friends, so they can watch this program tonight, can call that contact and maybe get some information?
I don't have the phone number for the contact right now.
Okay, thank you. I thought that would be a good segue into getting that out on the air. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for MGAT? Seeing none, thank you very much, Al.
Thank you.
For your presentation and for the work you do for our government access channel. The next department on our budget hearing schedule is department number 4215, Management Information Systems, MIS, page thirty-nine.
My name is Jean Lozak. I'm the MIS coordinator. For the benefit of those who don't know what my department does, I'll give you a brief I have a staff of six, two of which are the PC LAN WAN coordinators that you see listed under the staff list. They support over five hundred users and over five hundred computers, both of which are growing year to year. Various network applications, desktop applications, again, which are growing from year to year, and supporting the applications that are specific to the departments that may be mandated by the state of Connecticut, specifically the registrar voters and some of the city clerk applications that they use. The, in addition to the desktop network applications and the end-users, they have general network support for the servers and the connectivity from desktop to network. We also support all the phone systems throughout the whole city. We also perform payroll functions. We produce the payroll for six hundred employees on a weekly basis. We produce the W2s, the 1099s, and other various financial support functions. We also update the website, and we have a dedicated GIS staff. GIS, for those who don't know, is geographical information systems. And I have to point out that I have very, I'm very proud to say we have a great staff, and out of the six employees that I have, two of them have made employee of the month in less than a year on the program, so I'm proud to announce that. With that said, I would like to point out there was an error in my budget. I submitted my budget during a transition from our working spreadsheet over to the final submission. I neglected to put in a piece of equipment under the computer hardware for six thousand three hundred and forty-three. You should see that under the finance board recommends. It didn't, I noticed the error when the mayor's budget book came out. You'll see that it says zero, and there was a correction made under the finance board. That was my error in the carryover from the worksheet to the final submission to the And with that said, I will be happy to answer, are there any questions you might have?
Alderman Stanford.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at, on page forty, you asked for, I guess, two new positions, and they were rejected. Could you talk about what you expected from those two new positions that you wanted?
Sure, sure. When I started with the city in November of ninety-seven, we had two technical positions. One was the desktop position, one was a programmer. The GIS positions that I currently have were moved from engineering. They were CAD drafts people. So, since So, since 97, I've actually reduced my staff by half a position. We had 50 computers back in 97. We have over 500 now. We support all of those computers with just two technical staff. I'm asking for, and have asked for several years, for an additional PC LAN WAN coordinator to, not only to better support the police and fire departments, and, but to cover as backup to the existing PC LAN WAN coordinators in the event that they should be out of the office. In addition, the applications that we support are growing in complexity, and they interact with each other to some, to, to some extent, to the point where having a DBA on staff, which is the software specialist DB administrator, which is what I've requested, would be very beneficial in support of the, the applications that we have and are growing and increasing in, in complexity. And it would be very beneficial to have them both filled. And I understand the challenges. And year-to-year, we are also dealing with the challenges of supporting our users effectively.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman. Under Office Equipment and Upkeep, Office Equipment Upkeep, the Finance Board and the mayor have designated $7,000 more for Office Equipment Upkeep. And also, in the Software and Maintenance Department, 4796, they have raised your, well, your proposal was 209,000, and theirs is also that. That's $10,000 more from last year. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure, sure. The, the two accounts you talk about, the software and maintenance and the Office Equipment Upkeep, those are for the, the annual support of our hardware and software. And those accounts typically, those contracts typically go up from year-to-year. In the Office Equipment Upkeep, we increased some of our network equipment, so, to support the various, you may see we have some Wi-Fi access points throughout the city. We maintain those, and thus, our maintenance costs go up. And in addition to that, the, we've added more clocks throughout the city for our Kronos timekeeping. Again, the maintenance on those have, have increased my budget for Office Equipment. On the software side, we have, our, we have contractual agreements with our financial system and our tax and assessor billing system. The New World software, which is our financial system, went up 9%. And our tax and assessor billing system went up 10%. And our GIS software went up 5%. And our Cartograph system, which we use for complaints and work orders, went up 1.75%. Thus affecting the bottom line.
Alderman Ginizzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Director. Good evening. My question is on the time clocks that you mentioned. I remember last time you were here, there was an issue that we weren't using the clocks.
We are using.
Specifically, at Public Works, they are operational now?
Absolutely, absolutely. We've actually added another clock for the Building Maintenance Division, since what happened was there's a bottleneck. There was only one clock at the, at the Ford Street location. So, there was a bottleneck for the 3:30. Basically, most of the employees leave at 3:30. So, we decided to add another clock over in Building Maintenance to allow for those employees over at Building Maintenance to clock in and clock out at that location. And it, it's working out very well.
Is there an additional, any additional departments that are using the same type of software?
The Kronos system? We are in the midst of rolling out, we're right now running into a parallel processing with City Clerk's office. That's going very well. We have my department. We have all of the finance departments onboard. We have engineering, which is part of the Public Works, but it's in our building. And once city clerk is officially live and, and running independently of the parallel process, we'll move on to the next department. We hope to get Parsons done very, very soon.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Alderman Girman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Director. Each department, they, when they need a new PC or something, would that strictly go through their budget, or would that come through MIS, if they have an older system?
No. They budget on their own. They budget individually. And then, when it comes time to obtain that equipment, I basically get a quote, issue the request, the, the purchase request to the department for them to sign and process as normal. But everybody, every department budgets individually for their own hardware, their computer hardware, desktop.
Just one follow-up. What would the average cost be for just a PC for their office?
The, generally speaking, we, we get computers now off the state contract for about, I want to say, $565.
And then a monitor, how much?
It depends on what size they're running, anywhere. We received some larger monitors recently for about $216 for 24-inch.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just to follow up, through you to Alderman Girman. The reason why the, the $700 placeholder is, is what you'll find for most departments' computer requests, because in addition to the, the PC, which costs $550, there's also an additional charge of about $130, $150 for Microsoft Office to go with that computer. So, it's somewhere between $650 and $700 to, to purchase the PC and the software, so that it makes it usable.
I do want to point out that we don't know from year-to-year what the cost. For instance, we submit our budgets in November. At the time we receive the budget in, in July, we don't exactly know what the cost of those computers are. And they can vary from department to department, depending on the, the features. If one department needs a little more memory installed in their computer, or they have an additional component they might need. So, we need a little bit of flexibility on that. So, we come up with a, a reasonable number to budget with, so that we can anticipate any increases or fluctuation on that spec.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Hi, Jean. I'm, I'm kind of confused, because with the amount of memory these things are coming through today, each department, I don't think they could use what's on it, in, in some cases. But so, isn't the, when you, when you price these things out according to the state, we should be seeing a relatively common charge for computers that are in that department? I can't, I really, I don't understand maybe, but I can't, and I can't fathom the fact that one department uses tremendously more memory than another department, except maybe those that library and, and your issues and those particular computers. So, I, we should see a relatively common charge for all of the computers. That's number one. Number two, licensing, when you buy licensing for Microsoft and any other programs, don't you buy them by the bundles and not individually?
Since we don't buy all of our licensing all at once, which we don't do. We, we go from year-to-year. Some people get their licenses. Over, over the course of time, you'll have, say, in four years, you'll have a group of individ, a group of departments that will upgrade their license in one year, and then you'll have another group the next year. So, we're constantly staggering the office upgrades. So, it's never all at once. But as far as bundling is concerned, you don't get the benefit of licensing for the number of licenses that we have. We only have 500, we have 500 user, or 500 computers, and you don't get that much of a, a benefit from those bundles. However, with that said, the state of Connecticut, we buy off the state of Connecticut MVLS agreement. So, they have actually negotiated that in advance. So, we do buy off that website, so that we can buy on an individual or on a small or scale, rather than buying in large numbers. As far as the computers are concerned, yes, the, the standard memory on those computers for the average user is, is quite sufficient. There are exceptions, in the sense that you have someone who's using an application that requires a little more. For instance, in engineering, they have a CAD program that requires a little more memory in order to run that application. And let's remember, when you're running in an office environment, you just don't open one application at a time. You open multiple applications, and, and you leave them open for the duration of your, your time in the office, thus requiring more memory.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any more questions for the MIS department? Seeing none, thank you very much, Jean.
Thank you.
Thank you also for the, the work you do for the city. The next department for the budget hearing schedule is the Finance Department, page 37, account number 4210.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name, I'm Peter Aradisi, Finance Director, and I hope you don't mind if I stay at my chair. It's just easier for me to have the materials at my side and to give these three professionals enough space at the table. I'd like to introduce our Assessor, Dan Thomas, our City Accountant, Ariane Swift, and a very special welcome to Sue Taft, who many of you may know was our Deputy Tax Collector. And I'm pleased to announce that she was recently promoted to replace Judy Haley and, as our new tax collector. So, we welcome Sue Taft in her new position, and we certainly wish her well. She's done a, an outstanding job. She's been with the tax office for a little over 20 years of long and dedicated service to our, our great city. And we are pleased that she has stepped up and agreed to take on the role of tax collector. We also have the other divisions, our City Treasurer, who could not be here this evening, Lee Nozel, and our Purchasing Agent, Fred Bialka, who also apologizes for not being able to attend tonight, but we're pleased, the four of us are pleased to be here to answer any questions you, you may have regarding our department or department's budget. I'll just make a brief introduction to say that the budget overall, again, we, we tried to, over most of the line items, remain flat. There were some increases due to contractual wage increases for those bargaining units or folks that were eligible for it. But for the most part, the MEA and MSA contracts are being negotiated, so you will not see an increase yet. Those are in the Benefit Salary Reserve line item. The main increase to our budget, and I'll let Dan talk a little bit later about the increase he's asking for in the Revow Operations line item. He did ask for $55,000. The mayor's Budget and Finance Board cut that down to limit it to a $10,000 increase, and he'll speak more to that. We also, again, for a number of years, most of you on this board may recall, last year and the year before last, I, I made a request to ask for a Junior Accountant. And we continue this year to respectfully ask that you consider granting this request for us. Again, we, it was a position, as you may recall, that was approved back in fiscal year 2009. And due to retirements, we weren't able to advertise in time and fill it before it was, you know, cut due to budgetary constraints after fiscal year 09. So, we were never able to fill it. But the need for the position has only grown over the years. I won't go into too much detail, because I know you've heard me speak about this in the past two budget cycles, and I'll be glad to discuss it with you again tonight, as, as much as you, as you would like to. But I would sum up to say that this year, again, has been not only another challenging year for our department, but almost an overwhelming year. Besides the staff turnover due to retirements, due to, you know, illness, family tragedies, we've been dealing with not, you know, having people be out for various reasons. And because we are so lean, that really hits us hard. At the, by the same token, we're also hit with, as I've said before, federal mandates, particularly with the Affordable Care Act, state mandates as pertaining to the Uniform Chart of Accounts and other, other requirements. But even from the city side, locally, because of the success of the city of Milford and how much we've grown over the past 20 years in terms of the number of grants that we've obtained, the number of capital projects that we're doing, the, the retirements and loss of, of very knowledgeable department heads, and the changes that have been made to the Police and Fire Pension and, and to the union contracts over the years. These have all been good things for the city and have saved the city money. But it has dealt, really, an excessive burden on my department. Because as you can imagine, many of you might be finance professionals yourselves, or have knowledge of, of the operations of a finance department. You can only imagine that everything that impacts the city departments has a, almost a direct impact on our department. We do our work very quietly and diligently. We're all professionals. And even though our stress, stress levels have increased year after year, we maintain our cool, and we just roll up our sleeves and work as hard as we can to get the job done. But I have to honestly say that this year and going forward, it will be not only increasingly difficult, but almost next to impossible to maintain compliance, to be able to keep the infrastructure of our financial system running properly without getting, at minimum, an additional resource like the Junior Accountant. I'll state again that this position, if you were to be so kind as to give it to us, is not a panacea. There is just too much work on the back burner and too much regulations this year with the Affordable Care Act reporting that we have to contend with a few years from now with the Cadillac Tax, that it's not a panacea. This person, I think, if, if fully trained over, you know, over the course of training, will be overwhelmed, I think, from day one. There'll be just too much to give this person. But it is definitely a step, would be a step in the right direction, to try to give us an additional tool, to give us some hope of being able to convert our financial system from, you know, 1980's technology into a more modern system and a system that's supported by the vendor. Because quite frankly, the vendor we're with now, the clock is ticking. I, I think we only have just maybe a cup, maybe one, two, three more years, if best, before the support for this New World's financial system that we're on, that supports a payroll, HR, and the, and the financial system, you know, won't have the support. And without that support, we would be in serious trouble. So, with that said, I'd like to open it up to questions and give Dan, Ariane, and Sue a chance to speak as well, if, if they have any comments, and of course, be available for your questions. your questions. Thank you very much.
I've been asked to speak tonight regarding the addition of the accountant position within the finance budget, and I would like to thank Mayor Blake for his support. As you know, there was a need for this position as we had stated last year, and this year the need for this level of support is even greater for many reasons. There's been a significant increase in the legislations surrounding the Affordable Care Act, as Peter had mentioned, and the associated disclosure requirements. The state is now requiring a uniform chart of accounts, and it's slated to begin June of fifteen. That's this year. We're moving as quickly as we can. We're working with Bloom Shapiro, who has been contracted by the state as consultants regarding our interface of the AS400 with the state site. We really don't know how that's going to work and how we're going to be able to comply. Also, our need for a financial system upgrade grows more critical with each passing fiscal year. However, right now, due to our extremely limited resources, it would be very difficult for us to implement, and these items are just to name a very few. Tonight, we ask that you please see our vision for this new position. A junior accountant would allow us to strengthen the financial support that we already have in place. It would allow us to provide greater assistance to the external departments by way of training and research, operational account inquiries and reviews. We could assist with capital project management, budget analysis, and CAFR preparation. Most importantly, we'd have the ability to cross-train to fill in during staff absences we've experienced so many this year between accounts payable and payroll and tax. These finance functions are so very critical to the success of city operations. But most critically, we truly need someone with a special skill set, someone to assist us in meeting the ever-increasing number of both state and federal mandates, imposed deadlines, and regulations. We truly are overwhelmed. My hope tonight is that you will recognize our need and ultimately reinstate this position back to finance. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Milford Board of Aldermen. Your Honor, my name is Dan Thomas. I'm the assessor of the city of Milford. And this evening, I respectfully request that the board consider adding back to the finance department's budget specifically line item four-nine-seven-seven dot zero-one-four-two, which is our request of five thousand dollars to cover the cost of the computer software enhancement that will give the assessor and the assessor's staff the ability to administer the thirty-six-hundred applications that are processed by our office annually for the city's local option benefits program. The software enhancement would allow our staff the opportunity to mimic the way the state benefits programs are processed. In other words, once data for a specific taxpayer is initially entered, they will be in the system, so to speak, so that the next time they're required to come in and file a claim, we will be able to process that claim much quicker, cutting down on taxpayer wait times. Presently, all local benefits programs are processed by hand. Specifically, there are six, and this, of course, is extremely inefficient and it adds approximately about ten minutes per claim. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. Peter, I see that the, excuse me, one second. That the accountant that you have so badly needed for the last several years has made it through the mayor's office and the finance board's office. Am I correct in saying that?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Veccharelli, yes, you are correct. It did make it through the mayor's recommended budget as well as the board of finance. To go back, it was first approved by the board of finance in two thousand and eight. It did not pass the board of aldermen then. The following year, in two thousand and nine, was approved by board of finance and board of aldermen. And then, as I said, due to the retirement of my predecessor and also the retirement of the previous city accountant, we had those key vacancies to consider first before we could fill the new junior accountant. And then, as I said, as years progressed due to budgetary constraints citywide, the position was then cut. And since then, there was, I think, a year or two where we did not ask for it because of the transition within finance, but when I came on board as finance director, it became very clear to me that it was a position that was sorely needed, and I continued to ask for it in the past several years. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and we're not adding two new positions to the city because there's two that are not being filled, and so the two new ones that are taking place are still like at a zero high or so. Even if that wasn't the case, I think I would have to support this request for your department for as long as you guys have done the fine job that you've done. And, you know, we've been listening to you for a few years about this, and, you know, it's really time to kind of step up and pay the piper here. So I hope that this makes it all the way to our approval line, and I know it's badly needed. Thank you.
Alderman Casey.
Thank you. Through you, if you could just provide background on what the Uniform Charter Accounts is, what the requirements are, what that means, and the duties and obligations now that's been extended to the city.
The project was established by the state legislature several years ago and is being administered by the Office of Policy Management, OPM. It is not, it has not come to full fruition. It's in various stages. The state has hired an outside firm to help cities and towns to instruct us on how to go about it. Its first focus was with the boards of education to try to get all boards of education to be able to make an apples-to-apples comparison, and then the state expanded it to cities and towns as well. And I think the ultimate goal is for the state to be able to have a way to compare cities and towns statewide using an apples-to-apples comparison. They realize that they, or they realize and they do not want to mandate that each city and town switch to the Uniform Chart of Accounts, thank goodness, because they realize that many cities and towns have invested a lot of resources in their chart of accounts and that it may not always be feasible from a cost perspective and from even a workload perspective to be able to switch everyone. But they do offer it, and there's been some grant funding if some cities and towns, you know, wish to convert to the state system, but it's just a partial grant. With that said, they've started to ask us to submit our trial balance to them, but our system is so old that, you know, we generate it, it's a challenge just to get it into some type of electronic format, whether it's a dot TXT file or even to a PDF file. They would, they would like cities and towns like us to be able to map it into their system or just convert it to the Uniform Chart of Accounts, but we're not even there yet. We give it to them, and in the initial stage, they did us the favor of having Bloom Shapiro do a crosswalk from our chart of accounts to the state's chart of accounts, but we know going forward that will not be the option. We will have to do the crosswalk ourselves and convert our chart of accounts using our internal resources into the state's database, and this will be a yearly ongoing thing. But that part, we are not fully capable of doing, and if we have this junior accountant, this would be one of the key projects that he or she would be helping us with. Thank you.
Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the finance director. Good evening. Peter, if you could just elaborate a little bit, you mentioned New World. It's a vendor of ours, and currently we're at a nineteen-eighties technology, and it sounds like this is the catalyst of the problem, that we can't compile the data needed to make this transition possible. So with that being said, can you elaborate and give us some background on how we can push the technology forward, setting aside this new hire?
Well, setting aside the new hire, the fact of the matter is that the technology is, the vendor is New World Systems. They're one of the top three vendors for municipal government finance software. They also do police and fire-type software. They are, they have a lot of market share in the Midwest and throughout the rest of the country. They do have customers within Connecticut, but they are not the major player. Munis has more customers in Connecticut than New World, but nationwide, they are one of the top three companies that offer this software. We've had them. We've had a good relationship with them. We've been very satisfied with their product. We had a much older system, from my understanding, in the early eighties and in the seventies prior to that, and we did do a conversion to New World in the late eighties, early nineties, and that was the last time we did a major conversion. But as you can imagine, that was over twenty-plus years ago, so a lot has changed since then. And doing a conversion, as Ariane and a lot of, if you talk to my colleagues in the arena, it's a major undertaking. It can take anywhere from, you know, nine to twelve months to go through a conversion, and then with the technology we have nowadays, there's ongoing maintenance that's required to ensure that you use the functionality. Because, you know, you can always buy great software, but if you don't maintain it, update it, and keep reprogramming it, you know, it won't be as effective or useful. And with that said, New World System is a server-based technology, an AS400 technology which many companies used to use and some still do it. Jean tells me that a company, I believe it was Costco, that still might still be on the AS400. But with that said, most companies now are either moving to the cloud or away from server-based technology, and New World does have a platform now. It's called the .NET, and most of their customers have already switched over to the .NET platform, which is away from server-based. The number of customers nationwide that's on the AS400, I believe, is less than thirty. So that number has dramatically decreased over the past eight years or so. Am I, am I on the microphone? Okay, very good. All right. So as I was saying, New World has the .NET technology, and most of the customers have migrated, so those are where the support staff and programmers are. There's just a handful, I could count on my finger, the number that are just serving the AS400 platform. It's shrinking because they just can't continue to put the resources to that support. So it's, they have not told us yet that you must switch over, but the writing is on the wall. We can see it in the level of service we're getting now when we make phone calls with the various problems that we might have in updating our software. We're not getting the same level of support as the .NET customers. This accountant would also serve as a project manager for this major project. We definitely need someone who can champion the project through the various city departments because this conversion is not just all about finance, but it will impact every city department. And we need someone who can act as a project manager, a liaison to all the departments, who can lead the process with, working with all the department heads, including the division and department head of finance, to get this project done. Without that person, the project really, you know, has, doesn't have a good chance of being successful. Thank you.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman. Peter, in the private sector, if you're gonna switch over to a new system, those companies will provide the support system to make the conversion. I don't know if that's the same case in your situation. So my question I'm asking you is, I understand that we're behind in the technology, but if we invest in the technology only and we have the support to make the conversion, moving forward, the technology, the investment of the technology is gonna pay us back, okay? It's almost like replacing somebody, okay? And you know as well as I do, a lot of people in finance today, there's less people doing it because of the technology. So it sounds like that we're behind in the technology, so I feel that that should be addressed first. And I would recommend looking for a company that is gonna provide us with the personnel because we're making that investment with them and get us to that point so we can convert. Now, my second question is, these, the chart of accounts, I just want to be clear, that is not a mandated state statute. It's not mandated for us to be up to speed with the chart of accounts.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the alderman. No, it is mandated, but it's going through phases, and the phase right now is where we are, they are just accepting our hard copy trial balance, but I believe if it's not next, it's next year, I believe, December of two thousand and fifteen, it's going to be mandatory to provide an electronic file so that could be uploaded into the system. And they've told us in the manual that they've given us, which is very thick, that we're going to have to do it. They're not gonna be able to pay the consultant to keep doing this for cities and towns year after year. So they only did this as a transition, but it is mandated. It's already in the state statutes, and OPM has been charged to enforce it. Going back to your issue about the technology, let me be clear. I am not asking for a major, you know, we're, I have to explain this correctly. It's not an enhancement where we're getting so much new technology where we'll be able to do so, you know, hundreds of different new things. I'm talking about, it's almost like you have a car and you have to use the car to get to work each day, and the car is not, doesn't have the mechanics to fix it anymore, and it's not running as well as it should, and it's about to break down. I'm not saying that our system's going to break down per se. It's doing the job, but if you don't have the support behind it, the mechanics to do the oil changes, to make the fixes, to make the upgrades, eventually, it's not gonna be able to run, and that's what we're faced with. I, believe me, we've been trying to stick with this technology for a long time, and we'd gladly continue to use it, but our hand is being forced by the company. And even if we say, look, let's look at another company like Munis, that upgrade alone in MIS and outside IT consultants will tell you is far more expensive to go to Munis as opposed to just upgrading to the .NET platform of the existing New World software. So we're actually, you know, it's gonna be more affordable to stay with New World from both a financial and training perspective, but we're just seeking to go to that upgraded technology so that we can get the support we need year after year to make sure the system keeps running and can be updated with all the changes that come to us each year with the contracts, with the, with benefits, et cetera.
And, Mr. Chairman, through you, just to follow up on Mr. Aradisi's comments, one of the reasons why we may stay with New World is because over the past twenty-plus years, we have had so many customizations. We have actually, you know, paid the software provider to fine-tune the system to Milford's specific software programming, and that's one of the reasons why we're so invested in it. As you recall, Alderman- We need someone who understands firsthand our finance systems, the various components in each of our departments, not just the divisions of finance, but everyone who is involved and has the AS400 system, and works with the AS400 system, and, and works with our budgets, so that they understand what we're dealing with in-house, so that they can then work with the consultants to make this project happen within the next year. It is a huge undertaking.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter, I just, I'm, currently, the way the budget is right now for your department, is the, is the funds, are they in here now to move that New World system to the .NET off the AS400 to the cloud?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Veccharelli, I'm glad you asked that question, because it reminds me of another important point, which I'll get to very quickly. The funds, as the mayor has said, are there. You, this board, the Board of Aldermen authorized the bond authorization back in 2008 to go forward with the financial system conversion. Unfortunately, we were not able to fill the position of the junior accountant close to that time, and then we again, again had those two major retirements that had put the project on hold. So yes, we do have the funding to go forward already. It's been authorized, and we just need the personnel to be able to get it done. With that said, New World Systems themselves, of course, as the consultant, would help us with the project. But as many of you know, I, I went through financial statement, financial system conversions in the private sector. Ariane Swift has had experience doing it in the local government municipal side. And I can tell you, at least from the private sector, when we converted financial systems as was necessary, the consultants did, we, I remember when we went to PeopleSoft, they all flew in to the company, came in, helped us with the training, stayed on-site for the, the many months that it took to get the project going. But I can recall that it required myself, in my capacity as manager, and a lot of my support staff within finance, to really stop what we were doing and take a large chunk of our time then devoted to user testing and user support to PeopleSoft to really get the project done. The, the vendor is not going to be able to have the expertise and know-how of our internal data, our internal processes. They are going to need to work with us closely throughout the entire project's lifespan. And that's the problem, because I, as Finance Director, Ariane is City Accountant, even if we get this junior accountant and this project moves forward, we will have to take time out of our busy schedules to devote to it. We're not escaping our, our responsibilities to this project. But there is simply not enough time that we, you know, we're gonna invest a significant amount, but we can't put in, unfortunately cannot put in enough to get the project really off the ground and running the way it should be over, over a nine-to-twelve month period. And the ongoing training and support that will be needed to the city departments, who will have to, you know, be retrained on a new sys, on, on a new system. Thank you.
We're gonna need to take a ten-minute break. Our sound technician needs to make some adjustments to the sound system. Thank you.
I think the air conditioner's working. Me too. I almost got up and walked out, I'm telling you. And I'm a guy, but I'm, I'm pushing sixty, so.
Will the Aldermen please take their seats? Thank you, Peter, for that fine answering period there. Alderman Vitale, you have more question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter, there's, having said all that, it's still a little bit confusing, okay? So I gather the fact saying that if we don't hire a junior accountant, we can't change the technology. What comes first, the chicken or the egg, or the horse in the buggy, whatever? So going through a lot of computer updates and additions in, in many of the systems, would it not be on the department head you, you know, going to all your leaders and saying something to the effect of, what, if we're gonna have some new technology, now tell me what you need this technology to do? So now there's a list of criteria from assessor's office, from the accountant's office, from all of the, all of the offices. And now the, you go out to bid, or you, you have a vendor, and you go to the vendor and say to the vendor, obviously, these are the kinds of things that we need to do. These are the reports that need to be generated, these are the questions that need to be answered. You know, what is that technology? Put something together, put a package together, and come to us, and, and we'll, we'll look at it. So let's go, let's assume that now we're down the line, and we have a piece of, we have a piece of software that will do everything supposedly at this point that everybody wants it to be done. And so now you go through trial and error. You, you say, yes, it can't be done, you, you go through all of this. So help me to understand now where this junior accountant comes in and plays into all of this. That's, I guess, the confusing part. Is it just because we're not generating the, the right reports, and he or she needs to do it by hand, or what happens to this in, in the, in the process?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Vitale. First, I think we need to realize that the assessor and tax office have their own systems, and they've upgraded, they've gone to a .NET themselves with the WASH system, and they went through that, and that's a much smaller upgrade, but still challenging nonetheless, and they worked with, with Gene's department to get that done. But what I'm referring to is the financial software which impacts the finance, the, you know, the finance department, my office, the, the accounting office, that controls the budgetary system, the accounts payable system, which pays all of the city's bills, the purchasing system for encumbrances, purchase recs, et cetera, that affects the office of the purchasing agent, the capital asset system, which the purchasing agent and city accountant do their best to maintain, and the payroll system, which has HR data in it, which is within the venue of the city treasurer, who not only does her job as treasurer, but also has a dual role of being the payroll manager. We do our, our payroll in-house, and it affects that system as well. It also affects the revenue system, collecting all of the revenue that the city collects. So this is a, a very comprehensive financial system that works well. I mean, I don't wanna knock the system we have now. It's doing the job, it, it, we, we make the best of it, and it, it, you know, it did the job over these twenty-plus years. It just needs to be upgraded. I'm not asking for a totally brand-new system that has a lot of extra functionality. I need a replacement system that has the, also has more technology, but if, like I said, if you don't have the users using it, it's just, you know, it's, it's not cost-effective. And so we're just asking for that system that can be upgraded, so it has the support of the company, so that we can continue with our customization, because as you know, our union contracts are highly customized, and we will continue to need that customization. But this new technology, it's going to be a challenge, because they've told us quite frankly, they've said to Milford, and Munis will say this too, that, you know, it's, the old days are gone. We realize that you have the various bargaining contracts and different differences among them, but they are trying to step away from having to be so heavily customized, because it's hard with the quarterly or bi-annual patches that have to be done, as you all are familiar with, with software, that, that have to be installed. And if you have all this customization, the, the companies just can't keep supporting it. So it's going to be a challenge going to a new system for our department to be able to work with the vendor on the annual patches and upgrades that have to go through. What we're finding now is when we put them through, it always causes a problem. Something that works doesn't work anymore. Major things like the financial system close that we really are experts at, you know, it starts to falter, and these are major functions for the city. And we just don't have anyone to turn to. We're like, okay, we have to stop what we're doing and try to resolve it, but we just don't have sufficient time, and it just takes away from our day-to-day jobs, from what we have to do. And we could use this extra person to put that laser-like focus that's needed to fix these problems, to stay on top of them throughout the year and years after that.
Thank you, just to follow through. Again, that almost only, almost supports the idea of whether it's new technology patches that need to be made, the vendor, is the responsibility of the vendor to help implement those precise or laser-like focused ideas that, that are coming from your department saying this is, it needs to be done. So usually, when we upgrade technology, when we really get highly technical in, in all of these areas, people are saying, and, and, and obviously making the case to say that if we upgrade, it would almost eliminate a position rather than adding a position to what already exists. That's a common thread, saying, hey, give us the technology, and we'll help on the other side to eliminate or, or not have to put that person in a position where it, they may be needed. So that, that's the mindset here. So the higher the technology, the more involved technology, once the vendor gets it straightened out, I would assume, and I would understand it to be, that we would need less people in the department. That's my mindset. Thank you.
Alderman Girman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Finance Director. So back in 2008, I think that was a little bit before my time, what was the bonding that we allocated for that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Girman. I believe the bonding was approximately 245,000 in total, and that was to cover the, the cost of the project back then. It may be a challenge, because here we are, seven years later, pricing obviously has changed. But I'm hopeful that if we stick with New World, you know, we, we have some leveraging where we'll be able to work with them to negotiate the best price possible. And they also have different ways of, of paying for it through subscription pricing if we were short money, so we would definitely try to find ways to make it fit within that 245,000, but it's no guarantee that, that that will, a hundred percent guarantee that that will be enough. With that said, if we were to switch, and believe me, I've thought about forming a committee and, and really, you know, putting more effort into this, but quite frankly, we just don't, we just don't have the time. Even if I wanted to form a committee, I don't think Gene's department, my department, or anyone within the city, you know, has the time to devote to a full-fledged committee. But even if we did, you know, if we made the time, and say they said to, okay, let's look at Munis and the other major vendor, I'm, I'm almost certain, and you can even ask Gene about this later, that the cost would be higher, well above the 245,000, not just for conversion, but also for the annual maintenance fees that will be required. I can almost be certain that Munis will be higher. And if, as I talked to my other colleagues, other finance directors within the state, I've asked those who've had Munis, tell me, quite frankly, are you happy with them? And, and for the most part, they are, but one of their complaints is cost, that the cost of the annual fees and the cost of having to do these man, these updated patches, you know, are, are bothering them and are putting strains on their budgets.
Just one more follow-up there, Mr. Chairman, through the Finance Director. So yeah, so 2008, that was 245,000, whatever it was, that's, that's, in technology years, that's like fifty years, I mean, it's, that's a big difference. Would it be possible to, I, I like the idea of forming a committee, I mean, I think this is something that's going forward for many, many years, and I think it's very important to get a lot more people involved, just to make sure it's the right, you know, move, it's a huge move, and just to make the right move for that period of time. I mean, I like, really like that idea, but, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief comment through you, as a follow-up. We have made efforts in 2008, I know my predecessor did attempt to have New World come in to present, but by the same token, there was a problem on the MIS side, because, you know, Gene can talk further about this, but there will also, you know, there's additional resources that are needed from an IT perspective too, because finance doesn't have all of the programming expertise that is needed to, to install and, and keep the functionality either working or get it to work when you, when you bring on new technology, or even keep the existing technology. And, you know, as I said, forming, we, we did get together with New World recently, because I thought it would be a good idea to bring the HR department, the finance department, as well as MIS, together to get a refreshed presentation from New World to just see with their own eyes what the .NET technology was like. They did fly in, and they did make a presentation to us, so we kind of had, for lack of a better word, a formal or informal type of internal committee come together to hear New World present again. And we, I just told everyone, listen, and, and we had a very good, productive, frank discussion about what our concerns were. New World was very good about addressing them, and we started brainstorming and planning for this, this upgrade that will be needed. So we have thought about it, we have gotten together, whether or not it's necessary to bring an outside committee together, or even hire a consultant, just, you know, to come to consult with us. You know, we have to ask ourselves, is that really needed at this point? Will it cost us more to do that? And, and what are our goals in, in terms of doing that? Because like I said, we are focused on staying with New World if we can for two main reasons, to keep the costs affordable for the city, and within that budget as close as we can, and also from a training perspective. Does the city, not just myself and the accountant, but the rest of the city is used to this system, and there would be a huge learning curve and challenge to go to, to Munis, for example?
Alderman Giannatassio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Finance Director. Peter, it sounds like to me that you have more of a technology issue than you do a personnel issue. Do you agree?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I, I would respectfully disagree. I don't think that's the whole picture. I'd be glad to continue a discussion with you in this forum or in executive session to really talk, you know, go into the details of what it takes to convert a financial system. It, it requires internal resources, not only during the conversion phase, but afterwards.
Okay, and we understand that part, but I think we need to address the technology piece first, and adapt the technology, and we could start training from within. Because anywhere you look, whenever you invest in technology, okay, you are going to get paid back tenfold. When you hire a person, okay, you keep saying that it's gonna cost us more money if we go to the other system, okay? And you're concerned about spending money. Once you hire a person, you have contractual wages that increase, and every budget cycle we go through, okay, that's the first thing we talk about, is contractual wages and insurance, which we have no control over. But right now, we have control over this situation, and we can address it in a different fashion. Up until this point, you've been very successful in what you've been doing. You mentioned in your submission that this has been a problem or an issue since 2008. You come to us and you tell us tonight that there's not enough time to do this. I think that's being unfair, because what it is, it's, you're waiting to the last minute, and you're asking us to... we can address it in a different fashion. Up until this point, you've been very successful in what you've been doing. You mentioned in your submission that this has been a problem or an issue since 2008. You come to us and you tell us tonight that there's not enough time to do this. I think that's being unfair. Because what it is, it's, you're waiting to the last minute, and you're asking us to increase your department by one person, not only because you don't have the time to do the transition, but you're saying, once it's implemented, you don't have the time to use it. And I don't think that's the case. I think we should take a step back. I think we should move forward with the technology piece. I think that we should get it adapted. We get the people that are in the department trained first and foremost. And then we go from there. Then we reevaluate it. And I would like to see a committee formed, rather than go out and spend taxpayers' money on hiring a new position. And again, you know, you're coming to us with this problem since 2008. So I think the prudent thing to do is to reevaluate what you're doing and to find the right company that you feel comfortable with. And if it is New World, that's fine. If we have the software and it's already in place and it's customized to the city, that's fine. But let's make that advance first before we start hiring people. Because the first thing you're going to do is hire somebody and you're going to have to train them. We already have people in place that are familiar with New World. They're familiar with the system and how it works. Those are the people that need to be trained first. So I'm going to have a problem supporting this. And I have a lot of respect for you and your department, but I don't think the city's in a position to create a new, a new hire for this reason. I think it's more of a technology piece. Thank you.
Alderman Vecarelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So maybe a month or so ago, I was working on a friend of mine's computer. Needed, had serious problems with it. I said, geez, this is kind of an old computer. Yeah, I know, but it still works and does the job. I said, well, okay, let me take a look at it. And well, it didn't have Windows 2000. It had Windows XP, which is actually a newer version. And what I found was that, well, Microsoft no longer supports Windows XP. And so consequently, all of the stuff that you need, all of the support from Windows, to not just for the operating system, but for all of the updates that took place over all the years, are no longer available. So now, you can't, the functionality of the operating system is greatly diminished, and there's no way that you can get the support to make it operate. So what happens is, you need to, you need to buy a new operating system. This person was beyond being able to get a support and upgrade. It was no longer supported. So, you know, he had to go to Windows 7. And, well, you know, Windows 7's just, how long they support that before they no longer do? But I understand what the Finance Director is saying, because I've had the privilege of being there and watching these companies upgrade and bring their programs up to date. And it's like what the Finance Director is saying, he's not looking to change to a different company, very happy with the company that he has. But the old AS400 computers, the giant server-based monstrosities that are going by the wayside, they replaced those servers with the servers that are now being replaced by the cloud. I mean, he's really, really far back from where he should be. So the AS400 server, forget that. He shouldn't even be on that server. He should be on the new, modern servers. But, okay, we'll move forward. And now he's going to be in the cloud and get the best, a better update. But, you know, for us to sit here and argue about the position for the accountant, the accountant is needed, whether they do this upgrade or not. That was undebatable. Four years ago, when we approved the position, we weren't even discussing some of the, some of the stuff. And it was, they needed help then. And this accountant is going to be needed long after the upgrade to get the, off of the old server. So, I mean, you know, we could, we could sit here and talk about this all night, but the idea is that eventually, they are not going to give the City of Milford the support that these people in front of us are sitting here are going to need. Already they're finding it a little bit hard to get some of the support, because there's maybe one or two handful of people that are really still on these old servers. Everybody's migrated off of them. So I think what, I think what the Finance Director is telling us is that he has held the line. And so has his predecessor. And have just done a remarkable job. And we've listened to him say that, and his predecessor, that the accountant is sorely needed. It has now gone through the system where the department has asked for it, the mayor has approved it, the Finance Board has approved it. And we certainly see the need. We have the funding in place for the bonding to get him off of that old server and to put him where he needs to be, so that the City of Milford will be in a better, secure place where we can get the best service from the company that is supplying this software. So I will wholeheartedly support this. And I see the need for this position. And in fact, we're not even adding a new position to the city by giving it this position, because the mayor has, he doesn't want to hire anybody. So he finds another spot where, okay, well, we can maybe do away with that one, and we're going to get this one. So we got this position coming, and it hasn't, and we even swapped. So it's, we haven't really, not costing the City of Milford for another position. And certainly, this upgrade here has been, is desperately needed. So I know that I have the utmost confidence that you and your department will see that this is accomplished and is done in the best way possible. And I'm supporting you 100%.
Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up on Alderman Vecarelli. Absolutely. I think we have gone down the rabbit hole a little bit far with discussion about software enhancements and the need for our transition from our existing finance software to a new platform or a new upgrade. The Finance Director listed several of the initiatives, several of the needs of the Finance Department driven by some of the new complexities in the recent accounting pronouncements, the new changes, both statutorily and contractually, in employee benefits, and the huge burden that just those things, as well as a whole host of other things, have placed on the Accounting Office, or the Accounting Division. And just given the fact that we now have, you know, just this last year, $20 or $30 million in new grants that the city has taken receipt of, of which the Finance Department oversees and the Accounting Office manages, those are things that never before has the city had to manage. It is penny wise and pound foolish not to appropriately manage it from an accounting standpoint. We have to make sure that we don't make mistakes, that we have the appropriate staff levels to address all those things, because the fines and the fees and the penalties that we could incur if something is missed, because this department, at least given all of the other municipalities that are similar in size to Milford, or have similar, not demographics, but similar structures in terms of their government, Milford is far and away understaffed. The discussion that we've been having with the upgrades to the financial software, it really has been, as Alderman Vitale said, a chicken and an egg. Since 2008, the Finance Director, both Judy, Danico, before Peter Ardisi, has been saying that before we can make this transition, we need to have someone who can champion it through and then help to maintain the system within all of the different departments and divisions. So I don't want to get too far afield of what the needs for this position is. I know that there's been a lot of discussion about the transition for software. But this position really has a whole host of reasons why we need them. I think that it's been laid out to some degree. But we have not, in the last four years, added any new net positions to the City of Milford. We've actually reduced. We choose new positions to fund very, very, very carefully. This is one of two this year that we've identified, not adding a new one, but supplanting an existing position that's more necessary. And, you know, it is with a lot of research, a lot of discussion, and a lot of deliberation, that we make any adjustments or revisions. But I think this is one that's absolutely critical for the financial success of the City of Milford. It's good business. It's a smart and wise investment. And that's why I recommended it to you, and our Finance Board is recommending it to you as well.
Alderman Casey.
Through you to the Mayor. This need, I assume, wrote, was needed last year, but the Board of Finance, the Finance Department recommended this position, but it was not recommended by your office. Why was it not recommended last year? Did the need suddenly change in the past year?
It is a recommendation that I did make at the Board of Finance level, to the Board of Finance. At the departmental level, there was discussion. Ultimately, we waited throughout the course of the year to see what the rest of the financial package looked like. But it was a recommendation that I made last year to the Board of Finance, at the Board of Finance meetings.
Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I just would like to speak about the taxpayer and advocate for the taxpayer related to this position. The philosophy of doing away with a position and then adding a position and not allowing the taxpayer to realize that savings is adding a position at the end of the day. We could realize less taxes, and no one's here advocating for the taxpayer. Once the technology is in place, we could very easily become more efficient in that department. We've seen firsthand, in the Land Use Department, where positions were not added, they were taken away. And you had a director up here telling you that the Land Use Department was running efficiently, because people adapt. When you make a decision and you decide that you're going to not add a position, and you look for efficiencies, those efficiencies will come. So I still believe that this position is premature. I feel that the technology should be in place first, before we add this position. And we should not keep mentioning the philosophy of taking away, but then adding, and saying that we're revenue neutral, because we're not. What you're taking away is the opportunity, Mayor Blake, for the taxpayers to realize a savings. The taxpayers must be heard. So you are adding a position. You're adding two positions. You're adding the open space, which is not critical. It's not a critical position. In fact, the position already exists, and it's being funded by non-taxpayer dollars. So I don't agree with your philosophy. Thank you.
Any more, any more discussion on this particular department? Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Dan. On a much smaller note, you commented on the computer software, the $5,000, and how much that would save throughout the year, because it takes one individual, how much time per whatever. Can you just elaborate on that again?
Sure.
To elaborate, you know, to kind of see how much time-
For each year, we process 3,600 applications for local benefits, veterans and seniors primarily, but also disabled. And there are roughly six programs that are available, six applications that we have to fill out by hand. With the software enhancement, it would then mimic what we already do in the state, when we have an individual come in who would qualify for the state benefits programs for the elderly, for the veteran. All we need to do is type in their name, and all the other information falls into place, because we have a record of that individual. And so there are only a couple of numbers that have to change. So you're talking about 30 seconds, maybe a minute or two, to process that particular application. Whereas with the individual in our local programs, again, you're talking maybe five to 10 minutes per individual to hand, depending on the number of applications, to fill out by hand each one of those and do the calculations with respect to their particular benefit. And so the software would mimic the state program and allow us to do what we already do with the state, which is type in your name, and the information falls into place, change a couple of numbers, and print the application, and they're on their way.
And how many applications per year do you think-
Thirty-six hundred.
So 3,600 times 10 minutes or five minutes? That's a lot of time. Thank you.
And anyone who's been in our office, especially recently, which is the time period that we're now receiving applications, understands that, and most of these folks are elderly, and they have to wait in our office roughly 20 minutes. So we could maybe cut that time in here for these individuals.
Thank you.
Any more questions on the, this particular department, Finance Department? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Board of Assessment Appeals, page 29, count 4143.
Dan Thomas, representing the Board of Assessment Appeals. Be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Any questions pertaining to Board of Assessment Appeals? Seeing none. Thank you, Dan. We're going to move on to Public Works, number 4420, page 63.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Chris Sale for Public Works and all the divisions. And I will not get into a long story. I'll just sit here and wait for questions. If anyone has questions on any of the budget items.
We're going to ask for the questions on one department at a time. Right now, it's just the Public Works Office, pertaining to page 63. Anybody have any questions pertaining to the Public Works Office? Seeing none, we'll move on to-
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
-Highway. Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Public Works Director. So you've been on the job for how long?
A little over a year.
Okay.
No.
Just, can you give a summary on just kind of how the department's going?
Sure.
Budget-wise and staff-wise and-
It's been, I think, a very rewarding year for the department and for myself especially. A lot to learn, a lot to get on our belts. There's a lot going on in the city, from building projects, drainage projects, energy efficiency projects across the whole gamut of the buildings. We started one building already, which is Fanny Beach. It had two boilers replaced through the energy programs that the mayor and your board approved. We will be starting at City Hall next week. That'll be the second building. And within two or three weeks, we will be starting on the Parsons Building. And it's a substantial investment. The City Hall investment is, I believe, right around 135,000. The investment that we're going to be putting in at Parsons is almost $500,000. And we really were trying to get it in before the winter. We just ran out of time, because we have to take the boilers offline to really isolate the heating system, so that we can get more controls in individual rooms. And we just didn't have the time to do it. We didn't want to risk it with the cold weather coming. And it actually worked in our favor, because previously to this, we didn't have the opportunity to do what they call direct-wired LED lights in part- to do what they call direct-wired LED lights in Parsons. It wasn't a UI-approved incentive light. Over the winter time, it got approved, got approved actually three weeks ago. So we're very excited that Parsons will be the first building in the city that will be totally LED lights. So it's pretty exciting stuff. We're working hard on a lot of different other projects. Wastewater, a longtime employee, Jim Cooper, recently retired. Ed Kozlowski has stepped in to fill in as an interim, and we're looking at a lot of the systems that we have in place and how to expand them and get better systems in place. We just recently took a trip down to New Jersey and saw a plant down there that was a 3 million gallon a day plant that is totally energy self-sufficient by the methane that's generated from the digesters that they have in the plant. So some really exciting, cutting-edge programs that we're looking at. And Ed was very excited about getting down there and seeing it. And I think, you know, just sitting in the other room and listening, it's one of the things new to the position that I think that we as a city should really be looking at is training and education, but also getting our staff outside of their daily routine and investing in it. And I know it's very hard to do that. I know that dollars are very tight, but it is critical. What I see a lot of times is not that we don't have good employees, but we lack that support and that, you know, getting outside what they normally do and really having the opportunity to learn from other people that have best practices in place.
Alderman Casey.
Through you, Mr. Sale. Since you had a request for Assistant Public Works Director, and that was not recommended by the mayor or the board of finance, what were you, why'd you have a request for that? Or what you were looking forward to that position?
When I was on the Board of Education, it was one of the things I saw. They really had, they went after the energy component of the Board of Education, and they had the support. They had what they call an energies R, Jim Whittaker, who has done a tremendous job with Pat Bradbury, and they brought in a company that helped them put systems in place that made the Board of Ed more efficient. And, you know, when the mayor asked me, said, hey, give me your wish list. And I said, I know this is a tough wish list, but it's something that I would like to see, at least thought about and have a discussion. And I didn't anticipate it happening the first year. Obviously, money's tight every year. But I believe, again, what we're talking about before is investing. If we invest in our people and we invest in positions, and I know it's very challenging to put new positions in because it's very expensive, but it is, there is a reward to it. And I see us as a city, when I look at our energy costs, it's a huge component. But that's just one component of it. It's also how we build in the city. This is the, we're going to do, we're doing two design builds in the city that previously probably we wouldn't have done. One is going to be Dorina Place. I believe it's going out either today or tomorrow as a design build project. And what we're looking to do is for us to be general contractors and really run the projects. We're also looking to do a similar thing at the library. The board and the mayor has authorized us and bonded money to do the library roof, but we're doing it a little differently. We're trying to cut the fat out of the programs and doing, again, where we're the general contractors. We're going to go out to bid. We're going to make it a smaller bid component so hopefully have more competition. You know, what happens a lot of times on these big bidding processes, it really is only a few companies that have the bonding money to be able to bid it. So it really restricts competitiveness in the bids. So these are the things that we're trying to do. Sly Mora and Sean Bennett have been very instrumental as the building maintenance supervisors involved in this process. So it's really exciting to see them, you know, because it's something that the city really has never done before. The sewer project has been, you know, our engineering department has taken a lead role in it. Gary Wassmer and Rob Sale have both been involved with going out there and getting the information. So it's really, for us, it's an exciting time.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Director. I know you embody efficiency in trying to get the collaboration of departments and so forth. If you're looking to an assistant or you were looking for an assistant, and we already know that the example exemplified over by the Board of Education with their quote energies R, why cannot we look at a collaboration of an individual that would take care of both sides of the, of the, of the, of the street, literally, and have that one person really know what's going on in the entire city, in all the buildings? And why not have that individual, one individual, do the job of what we would hopefully not have two people do?
I think that's a great thought process, Mr. Vitale, but when I looked at the position, it wasn't just about energy. It was really about, and I know this sounds, as Peter articulated before, we really, there are areas sometimes that you just need a second set of hands to get projects going. It's not just the energy component of it. You bring up a good point, though. We as a city should be looking at trying to work with other departments, the Board of Ed, the police, the fire, you know, in ourselves. Presently, we're looking at a GPS system, and the Board of Ed has one system, the police have one, and the fire has one. We potentially could have a fourth. So you're right, we as a city should be looking at trying to bring people in together and doing that. But this one instance, we're, I'm looking for a broader scope person. That's what, that was my goal. It wasn't just energy. It was, it was a building component. It was drainage work. It was, it was pretty involved. And as Peter has said, sometimes in this position, you're not as hands-on as you would like to be. You know, I hate to say this, you turn into a bureaucrat sometimes. You're in meetings and shuffling paper and budgets and things like that, so it takes up a tremendous amount of your time.
Now, you understand that, and, you know, and I think we often work towards isolation rather than collaboration. And I think we, the mindset needs to be there, that we begin to think about the whole city, the whole of the city, and not the Board of Ed, the Board of, you know, the Parsons Building and City Hall and whatever. And I think we need someone who can do a lot of the things that we put on individuals to do a little bit. You know, that one person can take over and do a good job of what, you know, it's one of those things of a jack-of-all-trades and a master of none.
A great example of that is the mayor's been pushing for the last two months about trying to get us into a shared fleet. And it's challenging because change, as everyone knows, is very challenging for people. We have some cars that use less than 1,000 miles a year. So it's really, the mayor's pushed hard to get it, and we're very close to getting there. And it's going to be a very basic shared fleet at first, but that's an example, sharing between departments and also, truthfully, sharing even with, say, the Board of Ed with equipment. So it's important, and we're making progress, I got to say. There's a lot of goodwill, people are working together.
Just one more thought, that, you know, maybe with the fleet of cars and doing something with the methane from the wastewater can fuel some of these cars, and we need to look at that kind of thinking out of the box.
It's interesting you bring that up. I was talking with our garage foreman the other day about it. The problem with it, everything, you got to really do the detail and dig into the detail because the issue with it, when you get into methane or natural gas, there's a lot more components of training, training of our employees, and it changes. It's kind of like you don't want three different style vehicles. You know, you want to try to keep everything streamlined. So when you get into methane, propane, you know, natural gas, there's a lot more restrictions on the maintenance part of it.
And I understand that, but somewhere's transition has to take place. So, you know, you're going to be phasing out on the gasoline engine, internal combustion, and you're going to go to something else. And so it's understandable that it might cost a little bit more money in the initial stages, but down the road, in the long run, it might be more cost-effective. So thank you for all your efforts. Appreciate it.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've been, Chris, you know, the last time we did this, you had only been in the job at the last budget hearing like two weeks.
Two or three weeks, yeah.
And already, you were coming up with all these ideas. The other liaisons to the Public Works Department are always impressed with the creativity and the initiative and the imagination you bring to this very, very challenging job because, as you say, you've got so many moving parts here. There's so many personnel issues, there's so many administrative responsibilities, it's hard to do the hands-on stuff, but you still manage to do a lot of that. I know that firsthand, and I appreciate it, and I thank you.
Thanks.
Quick question. Clerk, the junior clerk in your office, has that position been filled?
Yes, it has. It was filled a few months ago.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're very happy with the results so far.
And what's the name of the chief, the head dispatcher there?
Kelly Hamels.
Kelly, yeah. So Kelly's happy because this was, this position had been requested for like two or three years.
It has been, yes.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Director again. So the position for Assistant Public Works Director, I know some of the other towns around us have an assistant, I know Fairfield does. Can you, is there any way to kind of estimate the savings that would provide the city or put a monetary number towards the benefit of either savings or grants or production or?
Yeah. I mean, I would believe, obviously, it would pay for itself every year. But I think it's the other ancillary things that come along with it, Alderman Gorman. You know, I'll give you an example. The only reason I knew about the energy programs was because I had the opportunity to have a meeting with Jim Richitelli and Pat Bradbury with the UI. They invited me into a meeting, and I had the time to go into this meeting. And subsequently, it's literally going to save the city probably $400,000 this year and a few hundred thousand last year. My point is, it's really hard to put it, I can tell you, though, that there's so many opportunities between increasing our recycling, reducing our waste stream, you know, having another set of hands at the treatment plants, which is, which are really our biggest energy users and are probably one of our, it's our biggest department, actually. So I would say, I would anticipate at least paying for itself, if not two or three times. But again, like everything, you have to pick the right person, and it has to be the right time, too. I mean, it's very challenging for people because, you know, when I initially put it in, and the mayor did, the mayor's like, you know, give me your wish list, what you'd like. I knew I was going to get some grief, and one thing about Milford is there's no secrets. I had people back at Public Works that knew about it before. I think, I think I spoke to the mayor about it, to be honest with you. And like, oh, why is this? And I said, we have to be forward, thank you. And there's great opportunities as a city, energy-wise, there's just a ton of opportunities for us. Waste-wise, water, wastewater is another example. There's just, there's a lot of things going on.
Any more questions pertaining to Public Works Office? Alderman Anderson.
Good evening. Thank you for appearing before us, Chris. You've done a tremendous job this last year, and you're truly a terrific asset to the city and our residents. I'm wondering if we could have a list of vacancies within the department, so if that can be submitted to us.
Sure.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions pertaining to Public Works Office? Seeing none, we'll move on to Highway Parks, page 65, 4421. Alderman Vecarelli.
I was looking at the Highway and Parks 45340000, sand. What, last year, what you've used last year, at least what was budgeted, and then this year, it's, how come such a low figure?
With the sand, Alderman?
Yeah.
So this past winter, Tom Hunt brought us a great idea about switching over from what we previously used, which was a sand-salt mix. And it averaged, it was a seven to three mix, usually seven percent, seven tenths sand, three tenths salt. A lot of area towns had adjusted to what they call a molasses salt, which was strictly a salt mix. We weren't even sure if it was going to work or if the staff would embrace it. And this past year, we switched over. It does two things. It reduces the amount of salt or the amount of sand that we have to vac out of all the catch bases on the road, even though the roads aren't in the best condition right now. We all know that. But it would have been a lot worse if we, if we were using previously what we had, which was a sand-salt mix. We used exclusive salt almost 85% of the time, except we had a backlog of sand-salt from the previous year that we were running through when we ran out of salt because we couldn't get the salt in from New Haven Terminal. So that's why it's small, plus it's, it's like $19, $18 a ton as opposed to the salts, $82 a ton. So it's obviously a lot less.
Questions pertaining to Parks? Seeing none, we'll go on to Building Maintenance, page 69. Any questions pertaining to Building Maintenance? Seeing none, we'll go on to?
If I could, Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just explain, I just did want to say while we're here, the amount of work that the Building Maintenance has done this past year has been tremendous, and every year, it's a very tight budget. They've done a lot of capital work, both at the Police Department, the Health Department, the senior center, and they've really taken the lead in doing more in-house items. So I just wanted to acknowledge that for the Board so they could get the information.
Thank you. Move on to the Engineering Department, page 72. Is there any questions pertaining to the Engineering Department? Seeing none, we'll?
If I could, again, I just want to explain, another thing is, with the Engineering Department, we were at one time on two sides of the Parsons Building. We're in the process of consolidating to being on one side and reducing our scope by almost 50%. Bev Hayes was actually the person that gave us that idea because we were trying to decide on how to really reassign and how we're doing it. It's one of the things that we're looking to, as we talk about moving forward, we're trying to automate and get to the point that everything that comes into that department will be scanned and be online, but also all the previous ones, all the previous permits. If you have a chance to stop in and see how much work was done and how much space we opened up in Parsons because of it, it's been tremendous, and it really has been a very productive thing. And that was really, it started with, again, one of our employees, Bev Hayes, bringing the idea to us. So it was exciting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Sale. Since you've consolidated space, you've moved people around, and you hopefully have open space? I'm going to assume that. And the assumption is that, is there a thought about rental space? Renting space?
That would, that would really be up to the Alderman and the mayor. I'm just an executor of ideas.
Okay, since you execute all your ideas, then how much space, if we were to talk office space, I mean, I can, we can think rooms. How many rooms are freed up at this particular point?
Um, there's a, there's a, I would, I can't give you the exact square footage, and I apologize if you should have it, but there's, there's a number of rooms upstairs, and then there's a decent amount downstairs that we have. Where I think we want to grow to, though, is, and Joe Griffith and I have talked about this, is looking at both planning and zoning and building and doing similar ideas of what we did at Engineering. And then once we get to that point, looking at moving some of our goal, and the mayor's been very supportive of this, is trying to get the conference rooms back down to the first floor so that at 5 o'clock, I will be able to take the second floor offline, turn the lights off, turn, reset the heat down as opposed to keeping the heat up high. As we've tried here to keep it a little chilly, so I hope you appreciate it.
You've already worked on the boilers and took them offline, but that's another point. But to quantify, at the end of the day, how many rooms do you think will be freed?
Um, personally, I think that if, if we were very aggressive with this stuff, I think we could see a reduction of about 30% in the Parsons Building as a whole. That might be an aggressive way, but I'm a pretty aggressive person.
Quantify the number of rooms, can you?
I, well, it's, I believe it's 92,000 square feet. Is that, is that the square footage of the Parsons? I don't know why that's running in my head.
Just, you know, I guess what I'm getting at is the fact is, you know, if we can generate and rent those spaces, if it has to come through an ordinance or whatever, we may be thinking in that vein that we may want to generate some money from that space that we are getting, making available.
And, Mr. Chairman, through you, we do that to some degree. There is a new office that we are generating some money for while it's providing us a service right next to Community Development. There's offices that came online for our veteran service officers. Again, those are not offices that are, they're paying for their overhead. Again, those are not offices that are, they're paying for their overhead, they're paying for some stipend, but the value that the Milford citizens get is the fact that we have two service officers there, any given time, providing resources to the City, City of Milford, that the City of Milford is not paying for. So there, the Rape Crisis Center is a similar situation. There are outside outfits that do come in to Milford that we offer space for. Much of the time, there's not a, a big rental fee for, but it's something that we're looking for. One of the proposals that we're looking to repurpose with some of the space that we're freeing up, like Mr. Saley mentioned, was to be able to take the second floor offline, off-business hours, so that we can save on heating costs and electricity costs. Those savings are significant in that building. That's a building that, in the height of the winter, burns 36 gallons of fuel an hour. If you multiply that by the number of hours those boilers can be shut down or turned down, you could probably arrive at those savings. So those are some of the things that we're, we're looking to do with this space that we're condensing. Parsons was a huge building that, back in 1982 after the flood, was repurposed. If the building was built from the ground up, would it have been designed the same? Likely not. We worked within the existing footprint with the, within the existing space. And back in 1982, they, they did a fantastic job. But again, was it the building that we, we needed exactly for the needs of the city? Either back 30 years ago or today? No, but we're doing our best to adjust and, and retool and make things more efficient and streamline the way that present City of Milford 2015 operates by shrinking some of the office space that, that was perhaps a little bit too large into smaller units and be able to identify new, new things to repurpose the, the excess space with. Renting it out to perhaps private folks or quasi-public agencies, that's certainly something we would entertain. If there's a good fit that you come across and you think would be appropriate for, as a Parsons tenant, certainly bring them to either Mr. Saley's attention or my attention and we'll be happy to discuss and consider it.
And I understand and I appreciate the idea that service organizations are in there that are benefiting the city. But when we repurpose, and I think we, you know, we're looking for that, that, that office that would go from nine to five, so that you're not extending the hours of the day to the Parsons Building. But I think that's a marketing and I think that's a branding kind of thing. And I think, whether it be law offices or somebody, and I think that's part of advertising as to a prime position in the city, right in the center of the city and right next to the courthouse, courthouse and so forth. So I think that's part of our branding and our, our marketing. Once we get settled and we know how many rooms are available, and I think that could generate some money.
Any questions pertaining to General Garage? Mr. Saley, you got any comments about that one?
I'll keep it short and sweet.
Okay. We'll move on to, a big one, Solid Waste, page 76. Any questions pertaining to Solid Waste? Alderman-Gurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, through the Director. I know over the years, we looked at ways to reduce our trash, and I know there was thought or talk about outsourcing, possibly at times. Do you have any thoughts on that or any research has been done on that?
I, I, I think, you know, there's, there's many different options when we look at it. It's, it's a decent-sized budget, it's, you know, over $4.5 million all in. I, I think the real growth though is, is, as you said, Alderman-Gurman, is trying to look at how we can reduce our trash. And there's a lot of different ways, separating organics, getting more recycling involved. And, and I gotta say, we should be looking at the European model. Europeans generate far less trash per person than Americans. And, and that's when I talk about best practices, looking at how they're doing it. I don't have all the answers. There's a program, Pay as You Throw. There's also different-sized containers that you can use. You can reward people by, you know, having free trash but charging if they want extra barrels. And there's a lot of different scenarios to do it. And I'd be more than happy to share that with people. It's a pretty, trash is a very involved thing, as you can see with the budget numbers and things.
Chris, I'm looking at operational expenses. And count number 4790, hazardous waste removal. The department requested $12,000.
Yep.
And the mayor and the Board of Finance, you have to $3,000. What was that, what was that, what'd you have in mind with the $12,000?
Oh, it could, Alderman Vitale, it could be anything. We, we had an event where an oil truck, an oil tank fell off a truck with kerosene. There wasn't a spill, but we had to get rid of it. And we had, we're not like a local place that you can just, you know, we have to follow the procedures. So there's a lot of different ways, especially if things come into the, you know, there's a lot of things that get dumped on the side of the road here near the, near the transfer station, or something comes into the transfer station that we later find out that there could be a problem. So it's a line item to make sure that we have some sort of funding if something comes up.
Thank you. Any more questions pertaining to Solid Waste? Alderman-Gurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you.
We're going to give Alderman Veccharelli a chance, but that's okay.
He'll get his chance. The condo reimbursement comes up every year. Can you just explain why we have to pay the condos half a million dollars?
That's, that's, it's my understanding, new to the position, that that's been a practice that's happened for years. If the mayor would like to, or Peter would like to...
Sure, that actually comes out of my office. The, the letters are actually generated each year. Condos and other associations, they pay taxes like everybody else. But any group of housing that's, I believe it's more than three units, has to provide for their own waste removal. And because they pay taxes towards waste removal, instead of or in lieu of having Public Works pick up their trash, there is a formula that's established by ordinance. Your board in the past has established the ordinance, which says that the condo associations can pay the lesser of, will be reimbursed the lesser of, the, the formula or what the actual waste removal costs are for that particular given year. Now, there's a couple of things that are musts. The condo associations must have haulers that register with the city and buy tickets through the city and can demonstrate that they're part of our waste removal stream, or they will not get reimbursed. That's something that we are very strict with, and we will be strict with moving forward. But I would say that all condo associations will be in compliance because of the threat of, if they're not, they won't get the reimbursement. And, and our finance director probably can give you a little bit more detail if you want to know what goes into the formula. Because I said again, the condos get the reimbursement of either the actual costs of hauling garbage for the year, or the formulary costs, whichever is less.
So, just to follow up, who, so who audits this every year to make sure that we're getting a better end of the deal or, or it's fair?
Well, they, as part of the process, they have to submit the actual costs. And if the actual costs are less than the, the formulary cost, which the finance office generates, they will get the, the lesser of those two costs.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman-Gurman. Just to elaborate a little further, I believe the formula is established by ordinance, it's $2.23 per unit for regular trash and 27 cents per unit for recycling. And you use the formula times the number of units that are owner-occupied, or the actual cost of the waste removal, whichever is less. And the accounting office, which is managed by the city accountant, does the audit and administration of the program. And Ariane also helps to establish the budget as well each year. So it's administered through, through the accounting office.
Alderman Ginizzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the mayor. Mayor Blake, has there ever been an incident, since you've been in office, where a condo association has not realized the reimbursement because their trash was not part of our waste stream?
There was an ordinance that went into effect requiring that condos and anyone who hauls outside of the city, the City of Milford, is required to register. We have given a, to some degree, a grace period with some very strong letters and some conferences and some meetings. I don't believe that anyone has not been reimbursed, but at the, last year, they were warned that that was the last chance in moving forward. They will not be reimbursed unless their haulers comply with the letter of our ordinance.
Alderman-Gurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I guess to the mayor. Just out of curiosity, how many other towns, or maybe Peter, actually do this? I don't know of any, but maybe you do.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. To be quite honest, I'm not aware of any other towns that, that may or may not be doing this, but I know it's been on Milford's, part of Milford's ordinances for, for many, many years.
Maybe the ordinance committee can address that soon.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I went to the transfer station the other day with my son-in-law, pickup truck. Went in to get the dump sticker and it was doubled in price. So I was wondering, I know you were looking into that, and I would imagine the city's waste removal cost, and then raising those fees, you've, did you, how did you come up with this, the double in the cost?
Alderman Veccharelli, what we did is, we, we, last year, we, we looked at a few competing towns. One was Fairfield. Fairfield actually has a very interesting process. They charge every single car that comes over their scale. Everybody has to go to the scale in Fairfield. It's a $5 charge and then it's a wait if you go over the weight. Working with the mayor's office and with the Alderman, we made a proposal that we thought was fair. We calculated, it costs us $80 a ton to get rid of our, that's what we charge. Our actual true cost, working in what our historic levels were to run the transfer station, it's more like $92. So we actually lose money with what we charge people. With that said, the tipping fees that we had, that we gave to people were extremely generous. We felt it was in the best interest of all the citizens of Milford. You know, if you were going to use it and use it a lot, it's still a great deal, two times or four times a month, I think it costs you a dollar, a dollar eighty or a dollar seventy. I'll have to get my calculator out to get the exact number. And it's the equivalent of $20 worth of trash if you dump it. After that, it's a flat rate of $80 a ton, so if you whatever use. And like everything, when something changes, there's a little bit of a transition. But again, getting to Alderman-Gurman's point, it makes people think twice. It is not, hey, I just can't go there and dump for free. Maybe I'm going to bring it to the goodwill. Maybe I'm going to try to recycle it. You know, mattress recycling is a really new thing. The mayor's actually been very, you know, forward with trying to get us going on it. It sounds like a silly thing, but the amount of mattresses, the amount of electronics, when you know you can dump it for free, it changes, as opposed to if you know you have to pay something. And I think it makes people think. So I think there's a lot of things about it. It makes people more conscious of what they, what they're throwing away. It's going to save the city money in the long haul, we all want to do that. And it's good for the environment, so, but you guys as a group approved it. And just so, just so everyone remembers, it's actually going to go up again next year. It went from 15 to 25 to 30 and 60, it's going to go to 50 and 100. It still is an outstanding deal if you compare to other towns and what they, what, what
Alderman-Gurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the Director. The contract to manage the facility down there is coming up. Can you just elaborate on that? Is there any negotiating, better rate or anything going forward? And are we going to continue with the same company?
That's, that's something that I'd prefer to keep. We're in the process of working with Enviro, and I would not want to put it in the public environment if I could, but we're working on it. They've been a good partner for the city, and hopefully they'll continue to be. And, and if we feel that they're not, then we would look at other options. But I, I think as a whole though, we have to look at what we're doing, because trash is going to change. We see a trend where we're collecting less, which is a good sign. What we, we really do, as you, as you know, Alderman-Gurman, is we really need to look at how we do trash, and it, it's going to change tremendously. At least my goal is to change it tremendously, that we really, you know, trash is going to be just trash, and everything that we can possibly recycle or reuse, we're going to try to do.
Yes, it does need to be addressed. Thank you.
Any more questions regarding solid waste? Seeing none, we'll move on to wastewater. You have anything to comment about that?
Yes, I'd just like to bring up, if I could, and inform the, the board. The mayor's been very helpful in us going after and looking at different energy components with the treatment plants. He's allowed us to, as we said, as I said earlier, he's allowed us to go down to, he was very supportive of us going down to New Jersey to look at a methane burning plant, but he's also been very supportive of us looking at some solar components. The treatment plant down there is, is, the Husatonic plant is an ideal location, because it's, it's abutting some other areas, some city-owned property, some privately-owned property, that would be ideal for a solar component. And solar right now is, until 2016, there's still a lot of incentives for solar. So we're, we're trying to partner with a few different companies. That plant would need, right now, we could put about a 350 KW solar component on it, but that seems like a lot. But solar is only about 18, between 15 and 18% efficient, because obviously the sun isn't up 24/7, rainy days, that kind of stuff. But the digester component over there is really exciting, and we have, we have a lot of opportunities to, to do a generation source down there that will, I think will really be very helpful for the city.
Alderman Ginizzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Director Saley. Mr. Saley, can you give us an update on our nitrogen credits that we've been receiving? I don't know if you want to do it year-to-date or give us a ballpark?
Yep, yep. We've had a pretty big transition with, with Mr. Cooper leaving, and, and I like to say this, we have a new set of eyes. Actually, we have about six sets of eyes. We're really having the staff down at the treatment plant take more leadership in, in the process. And we started out, it's springtime, not to get into a lot of details, but springtime is normally a heavier flow time, it's more nitrogen. And, and obviously, at first, we had some learning curves that we were getting, getting hit on. And we had some high, high runs with nitrogen. These last few weeks, our nitrogen at, at Husatonic, it's, our limit is 305, 300, sorry, 307 pounds a day. We were substantially over that for the first two and a half months. But Steve, our, our, God bless you, Steve, our operation foreman down there, has done a very good job in the last few weeks, it's brought it down, and, and right now, we're, I think it was about 285. So a tremendous change. Part of it was, again, investing in some equipment that had been broken and not working as efficiently as we would like it to, and then bringing... And then bringing in some companies that helped us with a little bit of expertise to teach our staff, and we're really hoping for some big things down there.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Salee, if you could just explain to the board how the credits work in regards to if, through recollection, if we produce too much, are we still being penalized for that?
Yes, there's, yeah, I apologize, I should explain. So, and it's changed, this year is actually going to change how the credits are. You're still going to be penalized, you're penalized, but if you save, you're not going to get the full credit. The state obviously is trying to save money every chance they can. So this is, you know, one of the things, so they blend both, the Husatonic plant and the Beaverbrook plant, excuse me. So if you go over your allotment amount, and at Beaverbrook, I believe it's eighty-one pounds a day, it's a smaller plant, and Husatonic, it's three-oh-seven. If you go over it, you get charged three dollars a pound over that. And at one point, the Husatonic plant was a revenue maker for the city. The last few years, it's fallen off. But I believe we've got a road to make up for the two, two and a half months that we were behind, but I'm pretty optimistic that it's going to make a big difference on how we're running things.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman. I know prior to you taking over, there was a situation where it was really becoming a detriment. It was a cost factor to the city. It was in the area of a couple hundred thousand, as far as I remember. So presently, are we going to see any of these credits on the revenue side? I don't, I would direct that to our finance director in our upcoming budget?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the alderman. In the current year, I do not see any revenue from the nitrogen credits. I cannot speak to the future, you know, the new year. I'll let Chris comment on that.
I guess, I could just interject. I guess my concern is, is it still a cost for the taxpayer right now? I mean, are we being penalized?
Mr. Chairman, through you. The hope is, and again, Mr. Salee talked about some of the upgrades to the plant, both from a personnel standpoint and some of the training that we've enlisted, as well as some of the mechanical upgrades. These were upgrades that you authorized a couple of years ago that are really coming online now. The hope is, obviously, for these plans to generate revenue through the credit program. We see this as an opportunity. Our finance department is overly cautious, as it should be, with putting anything on the revenue side this year until we have some experience. But, but the financial commitment that you made over the last several years, two years, to put new mechanics and to address some of the training that's really just coming online right now, we hope to pay, will pay dividends over the next couple of years before we bank anything on the revenue side. However, we would like to have at least one or two years, either next year or the year after, as good experience years, have some of these new mechanicals and this new training set in before we bank anything on the revenue side. That's the hope, though.
I appreciate the explanation. I just remember being on this board when Mayor Richitelli was in office. We were actually realizing credits, and we realized that on the revenue side of our budget, and I guess since then, that's not the case. And I know that the upgrade to the plant overall is relatively new. So is this due to more of a, was it a personnel error, or was it more of a mechanical error? And if so, it sounds like we have the right people in place presently. I guess it's not going to turn around quick enough?
Yeah, it, the sewage treatment business is a very interesting business. I know people laugh when I say that, but it's, there's not an exact science. You grow bugs, and bugs eat up, eat up and digest the solids, the organics. We, Ed Kozlowski has stepped in and I think has done a tremendous job in a very short period of time as just, you know, just a new voice in the department. But we have a long ways to go, and when you ask where we would be, I'm not as concerned with the nitrogen, I'm more concerned with our energy consumption. It's the, it's the biggest energy consumer wastewater in the city, and I believe that we have great opportunities just by running our plants more efficiently in the short term, but in the long term, looking at cogeneration. And, I mean, I'd love to talk more about it because I could spend the day talking about it. It's cogeneration, it does so many other things. So it's, you know, I understand your concern with the nitrogen, that is a small component of it, but the energy is the bigger component, and I think we're in the right direction. But I will say this, as I've said a few times, we have to invest in it. And we'll, you know, there's going to come a time, I think we're going to come to you and say, you've updated us and gave us the authorization to spend, I think, ninety thousand dollars on a SCADA system. That's the first step, to truly get automated. And Alderman Vitali stated, you know, automation is about making us more efficient, but also running the best plant we can run. And that's our goal, that's what Ed Kozlowski's goal is, and that's why he's helping the city out tremendously in his new capacity.
Well, I'm happy to see that this is on your radar. I know that you're still new to your position and that you have a lot of things in front of you, but, you know, this was something that was sold to us as a revenue stream when we invested the money and bonded the money to make the improvements.
Yeah.
And, you know, so we can talk about it, you know, further at another time, but I appreciate the update. Thank you.
Alderman Vitali.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the director. Talking about saving money, talking about initiatives, thinking out of box, can you talk to us about how our reclamation of asphalt is going?
That was a slow-growth project this year. Slow growth, which, we got a lot of good press on it. The town of Ansonia was a very big part of that, and that was, Doug Novak was actually the gentleman that really started the ball rolling. We have the town of West Haven that's interested. We've gotten actually calls from contractors, too. The actual money component was very small. But I think it was the idea of recycling, something that normally would maybe go to a landfill or a dump, and also the idea that we're using a hot patch as opposed to a cold patch. And, you know, the mayor's been very supportive of regionalization. So it's, it really is an idea, it's an asset that we should share with other communities and charge them a fair amount for that sharing. One of the things that the mayor is letting me have the opportunity to look at is we have a lot of roadwork to do in the city. And he's been very supportive of us looking out, and we're in the process of getting some pricing for a miller slash planer. Most people in here probably don't even know what that is, but it's a machine that will grind off an inch and a half to two inches of asphalt, and it gives us a better product to patch. And our goal is to get that so that when we have these potholes, we can actually make a permanent patch and do it so it lasts longer. And it just gives us a better product at the end.
So when you get this machine and you take off one or two inches of asphalt, is this, is reclaimed again and then put back on?
That would be our-
And if, and that's one question. My other question is, have we done anything with the machine so that we've realized anything in the city where we're filling potholes and whatever?
Which machine are we talking about?
The reclamation, and we're making-
Oh, we've done a ton of work with the asphalt recycler. Yeah, yeah, the asphalt recycler's been extremely helpful this year. I gotta say, can't say enough about this, great machine.
Thank you.
Alderman Girmann.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the director. I don't know if it's you or maybe the finance director, but the sewer use fees, the finance board and the mayor recommended six-point-eight million, and the department recommended seven-point-two. Is that an anticipated rate increase, or is that just a, what's the difference there?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Girmann. The department request for the sewer use fee on the revenue side is directly impacted by the expenditure request on the department's side. So because the department requested eight-point-four million, as opposed to obviously the number from last year, close to seven-point-seven million, just by mathematically, the sewer use fee, you know, would go up as the expenditures increase. So that's directly related to the department expenditure request.
Thank you.
And I'll just add that, it's a formula, it's also impacted by the number of users. So obviously, if for some reason the number of users dramatically were to increase, that would offset the increase in the sewer use fee line item.
Any more questions pertaining to wastewater? Seeing none, we'll move on to sewer commission, page ninety-eight. Anybody have any questions pertaining to the sewer commission? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Salee.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Next department is the public debt service, page seventy-eight. Number four-five-zero-three. Anyone have any questions about the public debt service? Seeing none, to employee benefits, page eighty-four. Does anyone have any questions pertaining to employee benefits? Alderman Casey.
Just reviewing, I guess, number four-two-one-one-nine-nine-zero-nine, post-employment benefits. It says the department requests twelve-point-two million dollars, and the mayor and board of finances recommends half a million. Can you just explain the discrepancy of what the request was for twelve million dollars?
I think three years ago, we established an OPEB trust, and we are making good faith efforts to fund that. In addition to the five-hundred-thousand dollars that we're paying from this line item, we're paying as-you-go and several other line items as well. Again, this is for, in addition to our pension fund, which is one of the top two most well-funded in the state, this is a liability that we have that's associated with post-employment benefits, mostly medical benefits that retirees have. It's a liability that our city and all municipalities in the state of Connecticut and the nation are facing right now. What is critical for us is that we make good faith efforts to fund it. Most places don't have a trust fund. The rating agencies, specifically the three premier rating agencies, Moody's, Fitch's, and S&amp;P, one of the things that they have complimented the city on, the last several times we've gone out to issue bonds, is the fact that we do have this trust. The members of this trust committee meet quarterly with our, with our trust manager. We do now have several million dollars within that trust. I think probably for the last five years, we've been making this half-million-dollar annual installments, which again is in addition to the pay-as-you-go amount. I don't know if that answers the question, or if you have additional details that you'd like our finance director to weigh in on?
Just as a follow-up, I mean, just, I mean, I'm a little naive, but how does the, how is the request formulated for twelve-point-two million dollars? Like what, who or what makes that request, or how's that number identified in this?
That's formulated by our actuaries, and that's the number, the figure that our actuaries gives to our finance office, similar to the add act or the annual required contribution in order for us to, to get to the actual liability they have. This is the amount that the actuaries put forth. We have never fully funded that. It would be a difficult pill to swallow if we asked the city taxpayers in one lump sum to fund this huge increase. I don't know of any municipality in the state, maybe Greenwich, I don't believe so, that has fully funded their OPEB liabilities. But again, what Milford is doing, whereas most municipalities are not, is we're making good faith efforts to push forward.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick note, the progress that this board and the city has made in establishing the trust has reaped additional dividends in that the actual ARC was closer to the fourteen-million-dollar range, and over the past couple of years, it has come down to this twelve-point-two-million number that you see here. It's a direct result of establishing that OPEB trust.
Thank you, Peter. Alderman Girmann.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to finance director. So in similar, I mean, the police, fire, and general pension contribution, so in 2013, 14 was two-point-two million, last year it was three-point-nine. Currently, it's at four-point-five. Do we anticipate this to continually increase annually, and what's the projections going forward?
Mr. Chairman, through you, it will likely increase for the next couple of years. We had to establish an add act. The accounting practices have switched from an ARC to an add act, which is just a little bit different formula for which the actuaries adopt their recommendations. Milford, again, we have huge pension liabilities. We have a very well-funded pension that, you know, generations of boards of aldermen that preceded you, preceded your board, have done us a service. Bristol, Connecticut, and Milford have the healthiest pension funds in the state of Connecticut. New Canaan and Greenwich are close behind us, but we still have liabilities. Your board recently adopted a new pension contract for both police and fire. That pension contract has actually reduced our overall liability some just since we have implemented those new contracts. So this figure will change a little bit in July, July first of 2015, the next time the actuaries reassess. But, but again, we have crept up over the last several years, and it's complicated. It's something that I struggle with every year. Every time I listen to the explanations of the actuaries, my ears start getting tired because they go into this long explanation that's very detailed about how in 2009, the markets took a dip, and ever since then, there's been a five- or six-year smoothing process. And they go into the granular details of why that pension fund is continuing to increase and increase, and will increase and will probably cap out over the next three or four years, and probably sustain at a seven-million-dollar mark. But that's the explanation that the actuaries have given when we sit each budget session or each time throughout the course of the year when we conference with our actuaries. I do it less frequently than our city finance director, but it's something that they're charged with looking at and analyzing and assessing each year.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, through, to the mayor or finance director. But our pension obligations are obviously high and growing, and that's why we have to contribute more money every year, and it keeps growing. So we do have a good pension fund, but it's not totally self-supported. A lot of people say, oh, you know, we have tons of money in there and it's self-supported, and it really isn't. That's why we're contributing over four million dollars, or actually, close to five million dollars with the other fund. And I know a lot of towns don't even have- And I know a lot of towns don't even have that, so they're in much bigger trouble than we are. But I think it's very important that we continue to renegotiate contracts and try to kind of keep this thing moving in the right direction so it doesn't start depleting.
We're absolutely in agreement. Just to give you some comparison of some of the positions that our neighbors find themselves in, last year, the city of Stratford, or the town of Stratford, had to bond $225 million in pension obligation bonds. Hamden, and that didn't get them fully funded. The city of Hamden, or the town of Hamden bonded $125 million in pension obligation bonds and it just took care of a small slice of where they actually need to be. So again, this is a huge liability for the city of Milford. It's a huge burden for our taxpayers, but where we are, where we fall into the mix statewide, we are better positioned. Again, we're not going to sit on our laurels, we're not going to release the till or we're going to hold firm and continue to chart a course that's forward-moving, but we are doing a good job in terms of, and we can take credit for it. Again, generations of finance boards and Boards of Aldermen put us in the position that we now find ourselves in, but we are trying to keep that steady, prudent course into the future.
Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to the Finance Director. Peter, we've been allocating $500,000 for the past, what, four to five years? Is that accurate?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Genitazio. I believe the first year, it was slightly under $500,000, may have been $250,000. But then after that first initial year, we continued to give $500,000 each year, yes.
Maybe that $250,000 was the year Mayor Blake was the chairman of the board? I don't know. Is that possible? I know that you, at one point, underfunded this when you were chairman of this board. I'm just, you know, because the point was made that it was funded at $500,000, so, and then he said $250,000, so I just, you know, looking back, it just, that's what comes to mind and I think that's pretty accurate. But moving forward, the pay-as-you-go, can you explain that to the members of the board specifically? I know we do $500,000 lump sum yearly, except for the one exception, when Mayor Blake was chairman, we only did $250,000. So can you explain the pay-as-you-go portion of this?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Genitazio. Yes, the pay-as-you-go is funded, it's basically the retiree healthcare claims that are paid out through our health insurance fund and that fund has a significant contribution from the general fund each year, as we see on the two line items, the city contribution and the Board of Ed contribution. And that flows into the health insurance fund and the claims paid each year for retiree medical benefits is the pay-as-you-go portion each year.
And I'm just curious, I guess the pension board doesn't weigh in on this recommendation or does the Board of Finance doesn't recommend a dollar amount? This $500,000 comes directly from the mayor? Is that accurate?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that is not accurate. It comes directly from our independent actuaries. They do a study each year for GASB 4345, which regulates the OPEB accounting and reporting and they report to the finance department. That report is given to us each year and they calculate the ARC for the OPEB, which is the 12.2 million figure you see.
And if we decided, for conversation, if we decided to fund that more, we are at liberty, this board, to possibly increase that amount? Is that accurate?
Yes.
So getting back to the $250,000, that was actually recommended at that time by the actuaries?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify that. No, I believe it was a much higher number. It's always been this very large figure of, you know, on average, well above $10 million. If we look back, I think my predecessor as well followed the practice of reporting the actuarial calculated ARC each year for the department request. So I believe it was well above $250,000 for the ARC.
So it was probably a $500,000 recommendation and at that time, that sitting board decided to underfund it by $250,000? Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions pertaining to employee benefits? Seeing none, we'll move on to insurance and bonds, page 85. Any questions pertaining to insurance and bonds? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next account would be claims and refunds, page 85 as well.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I'm just going through uninsured claims, general $10,000 request, and I guess that's supposed to be for payment for approved claims against the city which are not covered by insurance. Can you give me like example of what that would be under or what do we typically see that would not be covered? What kind of claims were not covered through insurance that we see?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. It's been, in the past couple of years, I don't have any recent examples. We've been conservative, we've lowered that number over the past couple of years. You can see that it was $20,000, we've cut it by 50%. Prior to my time, when we had a former city attorney, Marilyn Lipton, my understanding is that there were examples of uninsured claims that flowed through this account. Specific examples, I would have to leave that for the city attorney or perhaps the mayor to comment on.
I can give you some examples of things that weren't insured. We didn't necessarily utilize this line item. For example, back in 2012, the boardwalk that ran through the Beaver Brook Preserve, that was not one of the insured items that was enumerated on our list. We have since found additional funding or funding through a steep grant to repair and replace that boardwalk, but that wasn't, not a line item, that was on our, that was insured. A lot of things that involve the harbor are not insured, they're just too expensive to get the excess coverage for. I know that Mr. Swift talked about the pilings in some of the docks. Those are not insured, not that we're utilizing this fund, but those are the types of things that insurance coverage would cost more to pay for the premiums than would actually reap the benefits in terms of a payout.
Thanks.
Any more questions pertaining to claims and refunds? Seeing none, we'll move on to benefit and salary reserve, page 86. Any questions regarding benefit and salary reserve? Alderman Germain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I don't know if it's the mayor or Finance Director, can you just explain that account?
Mr. Chairman, through you, our Finance Director can give you a broad overview. If you want details though, this is part and parcel of negotiations with the different collective bargaining units, so we can't go into the granular details, but again, our city Finance Director can give you an overview about how this is, or the rationale for this particular account.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Germain. Just to give you a quick overview, we use this line item when the union contracts expire as of June 30th. We have approximately five bargaining units, including Public Works, MSA, MEA, for example, that, whose contracts are expiring as of this June 30th, 2015. So the city is in the process of renegotiating those contracts, so we have to anticipate what the possible wage increase may or may not be and we have to budget for it when the contracts are eventually approved. We have to make sure it's funded.
Any more questions on their benefit and salary reserve? Seeing none, we'll move on to private school textbook, page 92. Any questions on their private school textbook? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next account, unallocated contingency, page 86. Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the mayor, can you explain what an unallocated contingency is and when it's expended, please?
Mr. Chairman, through you, it is an unallocated contingency. It's to draw money for things that weren't necessarily expected during the budgeting process. At Monday's monthly Board of Aldermen meeting, you will see a budget memo transfer for about $3,000. The Board of Finance just passed it at tonight's Board of Finance meeting for the city clerk's office for indexing. That couldn't be expected at the start of the budgeting process that cropped up, so you will see a budget memo transfer from the unallocated contingency for a little, somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000. But it's utilized in any given year for things that aren't necessarily anticipated. Thank you.
Any more questions on their unallocated contingency? Seeing none, we'll move on to education audit fees, page 93. Any questions on their education audit fees? Seeing none, we'll move on to school debt, page 93. Any questions pertaining to school debt? Alderman Smith.
Maybe ask a question if I could of the Finance Director or the mayor. Why do these things turn up in the city side part of the budget? Why aren't these things in the school district finances?
I don't have a real explanation, other than tradition. This is the way that it's always been. This is the way that our budget has been structured since the beginning of time and this is the way that our city government was established. Could the Board of Aldermen work with the Board of Education to reallocate some of these line items? Likely. From a financial standpoint or a tax standpoint, are there any benefits? That's above my pay grade, perhaps Peter Ardisi could weigh in?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Smith. I mean, at a high level, it may not immediately have an impact because this would be rolled into the Board of Ed's budget technically and that is still on the, you know, part of the general fund. So it's just, you know, shifting it to another line item. But I think it's important that, I guess, one of the reasons why it's separated is because it's so closely related to the sewer bonded debt and the public improvements debt, that's all lumped together with school debt, the whole bonding process of going out to sale or to bid each year for bonds, it's all encompassed. It's the schools, public improvements, and sewer. The rating agencies look at all three areas, so it just makes, it just made sense, I guess, historically for the city's finance department to oversee all three areas, including the schools.
Yeah, I understand the logic of that one, but if some of these are incidental things, like the private school textbooks and stuff, that seems to kind of, pardon? Oh, that's by state law? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any more questions regarding school debt? Seeing none, move on to employee benefits, non-teaching, page 93. Any questions pertaining to employee benefits, non-teaching? Seeing none, we'll go on to the last portion of this session, the education health insurance contribution, page 94. Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Peter, in, just to go back to the bonding or to school debt, if we were to glean out the bonding for education purposes approximately, what would that number be?
If we were to take out the school bonding?
What would the school bonding add up to? I can't remember offhand.
Oh, okay. Do you want me to repeat the line item or are you asking?
No, just approximate number.
Oh, the total, you want the total long-term debt for this?
Well, not long, but we're recently bonded. I just want to make a point. Is it 20, 30, 30 mil? 32 mil?
The total school bonded debt is, principles, approximately 43 million.
43 million, okay. So if the education operations, and it still has to be decided, but the Board of Education is asking for 91 plus, 91 million, plus the 20 million in benefits, plus the 43 million in bonding debt, so you're talking about almost 150, a little better than $150 million budget for education, not budget, but expenses for education.
Well, it's 43 million over the course of 20 years, but it's about four, little over 4 million for one year.
4 million, so if you take the 91 million, the 20 million for benefits and 4 million, you're talking about 115 million dollar budget for Board of Education? Just, Park?
Yeah, I follow what you're saying. You could definitely add all of the education departments in here and that would comprise an education budget, if you will. But Alderman Stamford, I just want to reiterate, made a good point. With some of these line items, they are regulated by state statutes, so particularly the bonded debt, there possibly is state statute language that addresses how, whether or not bonded debt could or may or may not be part of a Board of Ed's budget.
But you're right, but the bottom, bottom, bottom line is, this is what we're paying for education. we're paying for education. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up, if you look at page thirteen on the budget, it does bifurcate the education expenses associated with this budget and, and does tally those figures up and...
Two is that bad?
Page thirteen of this bu, of this budget.
It's even greater, it's two point two, total budget is two oh two, little better than two, twenty, two hundred and two million dollars?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just look at the line above it, the two oh two is the grand total for the city and Board of Ed, the education, about a hundred and eighteen million.
Hundred and eighteen million, okay. That's what it figures out to be. Thank you.
Any more questions regarding education health insurance contribution?
Yes.
Alderman Germin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to, I'm not sure, Finance Director or the mayor. So, we have nineteen million here, a little over nineteen million, nineteen point six million, and then we have eleven point seven million allocated to the city and there's various other areas. What's being done to kind of reduce this or maintain these costs because it's obviously just going to keep increasing over the years? And I know the school side has implemented HSAs and I'm not sure if it's, it's really been well-received, but is there anything like that on the city side being worked on in negotiations?
My entire meeting this, my entire morning today was with the State Comptroller's Office and looking at some of the programs that are available through the state of Connecticut. So, yes, it's something I work on, on a, on a very regular basis. Again, this morning, a large proportion of my day was involved with our hu, huge liability, approximately twenty percent of our overall budget is employee healthcare costs. We have looked at each of the big driving components from the prescriptions to the dental, which is a smaller piece, to healthcare, to see which ways we can lessen the costs. I know that our HR Director talked about some of those in her presentation, some of the wellness initiatives. From a financial standpoint, our Finance Director has been very involved with the, the management or the consultant that we just hired, that there was much discussion on the last regular meeting of the, of the Board of Alderman meeting. So, it's something that we very much so have a, a great deal of involvement managing.
Any more questions regarding education health insurance contribution?
Yes.
Alderman Stamford.
Yes.
With that big coat on there.
I'm cold. Anyway, I recall that when former Mayor Richatelli, now the Chair of Benefits of Public School, came before us and someone on this board asked him, what was the advantage of going to another type of insurance? And he said that the advantage was that there were higher deductibles. So, I'm thinking that, you know, probably this health insurance cost should have gone down, if that's so. And secondly, the, when I was head of the union, the teachers' union in this city, that insurance contribution was under the city's, of the board side, the education side. And it was during Mayor Listman's term and he wanted it desperately to be on the city side because, he said, if he could negotiate both sides together, he could get a better deal. And that's how that happened. But before that, it was always on the Board of Education's side. They would negotiate the price for the health benefits. So, I just wanted to make that point clear.
Thank you, Alderman Stamford. A little history lesson there. Any more, any more questions pertaining to education health insurance contribution? Seeing none, is there a motion to recess?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We're going to recess to the next budget meeting, which is going to be this Wednesday, the day after tomorrow, April twenty-seventh, at seven o'clock. Bring your Board of Education book, Lennon.